Like, we needed to make sure the mayor was here for that conversation. Um, so, I'm just here to contribute to that discussion. So I'd like to continue that one till next week, if we can put that on next week's agenda. So.
Yeah, that'll be fine.
So if you're concerned about giving, uh, agenda item 10E to next Tuesday, July 28? Alright, anything else, Scott or staff that you want to be aware of?
You do have, uh, item 9B and C, um, who need to be continued to the public hearing. Uh, that is, vote on B is getting it here.
So continue to July 28? Okay, so you have.
9B and 9C.
9B and C and item 10E to continue until 28 meeting.
Yeah. That's it.
Oh, look, promotion.
I'll make the motion that we approved tonight's agenda, uh, with the continuation of 9B and C and 10E to, uh, July 28.
A second. Motion by Cindy, second by Diana, all in favor?
Alright.
Okay, we are now to the open session, uh, portion of our meeting, and this is where members of the public are welcome to come up to your podium. Please state your name and address, and you can use two minutes to ask questions, have any concerns that you want to, um, bring to the city council. So we'll go ahead and give you the opportunity.
Hello, my name, oh, sorry, my name is Jill Skoy. My address is 1924 North, 1150 West in Pleasant Grove. I'm here, uh, can, uh, representing concerned citizens about the, um, what was done at the planning commission meeting last Thursday night. I sent each.
I just wanted to make a question, but it was the Board of Adjustment.
The Board of Adjustment, okay. Okay, thank you. Um, so I have some questions for you. I sent each of you an email. I'm hoping you had a chance to get that and to review that before I've come tonight. So, uh, you know why I'm here. We have a main concern about Verizon Wireless coming in to put, uh, cell tower on Manila Elementary School property. Uh, I listed in your email the reasons that we have concerns about that, which are health-related. Which by the, uh, 1996 Federal Trade, um, that's the exact, the Federal Telecommunication, Telecommunication Act of 1996, we are not able to fight something like a cell tower based on the health and wellness of the citizens of this city. What I'm coming to you about is that, um, although that is true, we feel like as a small community, that we should be able to make, make ordinances that protect our citizens from the federal government telling us who we can and cannot protect. And I wanted to go through a couple of things that happened that evening, um, that we feel like were not followed correctly when it comes to, uh, the city Planning Commission bylaws and operating policies.
Sorry, the Board of Adjustment?
The Board of Adjustment, is that how I say it? Is it?
Yeah, that's right, so Planning Commission is a different body, and then, oh, sorry, well, Tina's our city.
Well, I was just gonna say, if you're going to read the Planning Commission bylaws and rules, they're not applicable to what happened last week because it was a separate body that made that decision.
Okay, well, I won't read those then, but I can read.
But Jill, if, if you want to, I mean, you're welcome to, you can come prepared, we're, we're willing to go ahead and.
Okay.
Let's just, uh, just that, but just know that they are two different bodies.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure when it goes on record that everyone's clear about what you're introducing.
Will it matter what I, what I've brought if it's a different committee?
Yeah, because they don't have the same policy authority.
Okay, so that's my mistake in not reading the correct, and, and who was exactly making the decisions. But what I do, but what I can address is that that body, um, who made the decision that evening, uh, we believe that they did not follow City Ordinance Code 10-15-36, which says that towers are to be located in rear yard areas and in areas least obtrusive on the public view and neighboring uses. Obtrusive means noticeable or prominent in an unwelcome or intrusive way. It also means obvious, unmistakable, and unmissable. On June 16th, the committee read this, and in our opinion, they chose to dismiss it.
Sir, do you mean July 16th?
July 16th, yes, thank you for correcting me. I'm really nervous, this is not, this is not my forte.
No, you're just, and I just want, I just want to make sure it's on record correctly, so then people aren't.
Yes.
Just please go ahead and.
Yes, no, you could, feel free to interrupt me, because I, I appreciate the corrections. Um, Dustin Phillips, who is on that committee, um, or, or however you say it, on the board, he asked if they could get an image of how a 75-foot cell tower next to a 30-foot school building and 100 feet from the road would look. They did not have an image that would support showing that it was not obtrusive and that it, and it is, is on the side yard of the property.
And Jill, can I ask, when you say the Iger French of Verizon?
Yes, so.
Didn't ask Verizon first?
Verizon, yes, he asked, uh, Verizon and the, and the city planning committee, who were sitting over there, if they had an image of that, and nobody produced one, and they said they didn't have one. And some other members of the board told him to take the information that they did have, the images, and imagine what it would look like. So, he was not a voting member of the board, but he was obviously concerned about them not following the city ordinance. And Verizon was never asked to present, uh, evidence to show that the city ordinance was being met. Um, let me, let me just see if I have other information that, that pertains to this. So, in the end, our concern is that you will be discussing tonight that you would allow cell towers to be 150 feet apart as opposed to 1,000 feet apart. The current city code says they have to be 1,000 feet apart. If that board had just waited for your decision and you had decided to change that ordinance, we feel this would be a non-issue, because Verizon originally wanted to put the cell tower in the park. And, um, I've collected, just in one day, 110 signatures from members who live, uh, within the Manila school boundaries, who are opposed to the cell tower being built on the property. And, I'm, if, if you need more than that, if I have more time, I'd be happy to get that. So, what we're here to ask you, as concerned citizens, is that you, you work with the board and with Verizon to find a new location for that, so that we can meet everybody's needs. Uh, Verizon would actually be able to put the tower up more quickly, because they said that they would not be building during school, school hours, which they would be able to do if they were building at the park. Uh, Verizon would, um, also be paying the city, so the city would end up with the money. Um, so that would benefit to the city. And then the concerned citizens who are concerned about the health benefits of it being on the school property and having their, excuse me, their children subjected to six-plus hours for nine months a year to a cell tower, that would be resolved as well. So, uh, that's why I'm here to address you tonight, to hope that you can work with them to find a way to resolve this issue. Thank you.
Do you want to ask questions?
Do you have any questions?
No, I was gonna, I'll wait.
Well, I think you for the research and, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Uh, Eric Skoy, Jill's husband, 1924 North, 1150 West in Pleasant Grove. One, just one additional quick item, is that when we sat in the Board of Adjustments meeting, there was a, a duty that needed to be, uh, to met, to be met relative to, uh, Verizon's ability or, or good faith effort to co-locate their desired tower with the Sprint Tower. And, uh, the.
Where is the Sprint Tower?
It is in the park. Yeah. Yep, Discovery Park.
Don't we have one also at the cemetery?
So, uh, there was, there's a need, uh, they must be based on the Board of Adjustments, uh, bylaws, because it was given as, um, evidence why the, uh, uh, decision, the appeal, uh, excuse me, the initial decision by the Board of Adjustments, and then this, of course, led to the appeal, why they couldn't act, whether, why their, um, decision of no couldn't stand. So, the information that Verizon had was their evidence of a good faith effort that they had attempted to co-locate. That information is available, however, the information was not in the hands of the Board of Adjustments until that evening, and they voted yes without really proving that there was a good faith effort. Or even reading it. So, to, to, in my mind, that's an issue that the city council should, should, uh, take a look at to make sure that they're, they're exercising due diligence in their decision-making process, which in this case appears they did not. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I am Dawn Squires, in the 1202 West, 1320 North in Pleasant Grove. I have talked to several of you about the issue of rated R movies that are in library, but it's a new issue in the last 15 months, I believe. And I've gone to the Pleasant Grove Library Board meeting and talked to them about it. And I'm just here tonight to simply ask you to put it on an agenda for a future date, so we can have some more research in time. And I also want to just applaud you, each of you, for your efforts and your time on the council, because just this one issue has taken so much of my time and my thoughts and my energy. So I really appreciate the time you serve and the time you work for our city. And that's why I'm here tonight, just to put it on the future.
Very strong.
Is that already planned, or?
Well, so, I guess it depends on what we want on the agenda. Are we discussing whether or not to have them at all in the library, or? Cause I'm not super familiar with, um, exactly what's, what's, uh, the communication between council and.
So now, are you, yeah, what are you interested in, how do you want me to set a specific thing related to rear yard?
I am interested in, first and foremost, removing the rated R movies, and if that can't happen, to have a restriction, because right now in our city, anyone over the age of six in a library card has full access to. Did I say something wrong? Uh, rated R movies, and I think that that is not safe for.
Now, so, well, what, sorry, you said, because our library.
So we are in the process right now of, um, changing our checkout system so that it will block children under the age of 18 from checking out our rated R movies.
So is that being done in-house? Is that something that can be rectified through you and the library board, or do we need to also take that?
It, it just depends on, on what you want to do, because she is asking first, after, and then. Um, that is not something we're, we are looking at, unless we are told to look at that more seriously. Um, but we have made it so that he cannot check them out under 18, unless a parent wants to get that permission.
You have already done that, you've already made that?
We are doing that right now.
Oh, I thought you said you had done that, you haven't done that yet.
Well.
You're doing it.
It's being done by, as we speak.
Okay.
So what is the timeframe on that being completed?
Tomorrow?
Okay.
So, Sheri, that will, is that just something that goes on their library card? So, sometimes, or can the movies actually, or is it work of the kind that come in as well? So that they can go through self-checkout?
Well, because adults are the ones who will be checking them out, we will not put them behind the counter.
But not necessarily, because if a, if a child under Senate 2 came in and went through self-checkout, then they get.
No, that's, that's what I'm saying, the system, um, that we are working on right now, um, it's a little bit of a process with the checkout system, but it will block them at the self-checkouts also.
You're talking about like the security wise?
No, the actual checkout, it will block them from being able to check out, on the self-checkouts and with the clerks.
So what happens on the self-checkout of the Simon Rose?
Well, I mean, people get locked when their cards are expired, or they're, you know, we have the wrong address. But there are a lot of reasons that things get blocked, that, that cards get blocked. It would just come up saying, you can't, you know, that your card is blocked for that checkout.
So is it also possible to put them behind the counter, or is it just that they would get access to these now, or?
Well, of course, anything is possible, but that is something that is really, really frowned on in the library room. Especially when they are for adults.
So, question, when they, there's, I think there's a, a security device associated with videos, right? That's been taken off, is that taken off by the self-check machine or the library?
Oh.
Well, we've never had rated R movies in our library before, and I've looked at the policy, and it wasn't in the policy, I think, because there wasn't a need for it. As a city, I don't think we saw the need to have that in the policy. In Provo, the city just to the south of us, the biggest city in Utah County, has 116,000 residents in their libraries, rated R free. And that is because there's a Utah statute that says if, if it ends in community standards, then you don't have to have it in your community. And I feel like it does offend our community standards, and that's why I'd like to have it as, on a future agenda item, that we can look at that more.
Well, that would be a great suggestion. We've got two issues, and one of them's resolved as of tomorrow, probably, and the other one, we could discuss as council and see if we want to make any kind of action related to it.
I think it needs to be an open discussion.
If we're okay, next week's agenda is already pretty full, um, if we do this on August 4th, is that be all right?
Great, thank you, I appreciate that very much, thank you.
Hey, Scott, before we go on to the open session, can we address the, the cell tower?
Yeah, let's have Tina, uh, watch with the legal side.
Okay, so I want to pull up the forgotten cell.
Um, just, so, the residents that are, um, for tonight on that issue now, one of the things that you requested is that the city try to work with Verizon to get them to move the, um, cell tower to the ball fields. And I just want you to know that we have been working with them for months and months and months. Um, and that had the decision, um, been denied, the appeal been denied, then they would have, um, co-located in the Manila ball fields. And so it's not something that we haven't already been involved in, I just want you to know that, that we have been working with them. The problem that they had and that we had is that our ordinance requires co-location, but the person who gets the poll first sometimes, um, has discretion over how quickly they give permission to the next one in line, and also where on the poll, given other co-locators, they can be located. So Sprint has told Verizon that they could locate on, co-locate on the poll that we'd like them to move to, but they've given them such a low spot on the poll that it's not, uh, feasible for Verizon to locate there. Uh, we have encouraged them to, um, take advantage of the change in the ordinance and to consider relocating, um, their request and coming back to the ball fields on another poll. Um, my understanding, their conversation with our community development department is they're not interested in doing that at this point. Um, but we can certainly, you know, approach them again and ask again. And then in terms of the legal standpoint of what happened procedurally, um, at this point, because the Board of Adjustment acted in what they call a quasi-judicial manner in hearing that appeal, their decision is final. So the city council does not have a role in going back and second-guessing that decision at this point, or overturning that decision at this point. If either party is unhappy with the decision from the Board of Adjustment, the only appeal is to directly to district court. And so, that limits, um, the ability of the city council to address the concerns about the decision in the way, um, if you feel like it wasn't made correctly. Um, does that help, does that answer some of the?
Can I ask a couple questions?
So, is the, um, the board knew that the city council was considering this option, which would allow Verizon to build in the park on their own tower, which could have been as high as they wanted, or as high as city code allows. So my question is, is what is the process? How is the Board of Adjustment allowed to move forward on an issue that is currently being, like an ordinance that's currently trying to be changed? Could they have chosen to, uh, push the meeting to another day? Is, is there?
Well, their role, their role was to act like a judge on the decision that was made down below, which is at the planning commission level. And so while they may have been aware that there was an ordinance amendment in process, their job was to just, to look at and decide whether or not the planning commission's decision was legally, um, correct and could be upheld. So the, the other considerations that you and I would look at as practical considerations that would make sense for us to do, didn't really fit with what they were tasked to do that night. All they were supposed to be was the judge on the decision of granting a conditional use permit that the planning commission made. So the other extraneous interests that we have of, you know, making it easier for the next group to co-locate, that wasn't, uh, that wasn't their job to do.
Can they?
If they couldn't do it, 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 had they taken that into consideration, then Verizon would have had an appeal right to go to the, to the district court and say, the Board of Adjustment, you know, didn't do what they were supposed to do, they were taking all these other things into consideration that legally they weren't allowed to do.
But could they have decided to postpone the decision, or were they legally bound to make it that night, July 16th?
Um, they could have proved, they, they always have the right to continue it, if they had a reason to continue it.
Okay.
But if they, if they had used pending legislation as a reason to continue it, I don't think that would have been a valid reason, I believe.
So if we feel that they have not upheld a city ordinance, then we have to appeal to the district court about that?
Yes, because they were the appellate body in this, in this instance. They'd already been appealed, um, and they were the appellate body, so we're just moving up the appellate chain. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
What about, you know, with the school board being optioned, they can appeal to? It's on the property.
Well, I think if you wanted to address the school board and ask them to reconsider, um, allowing, acting permission, allowing it to be on their school property, that's something that could be done. Um, you can even approach Verizon, um, and just ask them, say, look, you have an option now, you can go back to the discovery part, you know, would you consider doing that? Those are two options that you still have open to you, short of filing your appeal in district court.
Would you, uh, is there a basis on a lack of, uh, uh, demonstration of a good faith effort to appeal to the fourth, fourth district court appeals?
That would require a legal conclusion, and I'm not prepared to do that.
Okay.
So, I guess my, uh, plea to the, uh, city council is that in future instances, when you know that you're dealing with something that's going to affect a community and also a business that are trying to work together, that there's some type of communication to say, hey, let's, let's wait on this, let's make a decision before we decide this. Um, I'm also concerned with the amount of publicity that went out. I know that there's certain laws, they only have to tell people within 300 feet of it, but I also feel like something that's this large should require more publicity so that people like myself have a chance to get in front of this, instead of hearing about the meeting 11 o'clock at night on Wednesday night before the Board of Adjustment is ready to make the decision, so.
Sorry. So as far as the legal notice, um, Tina, where does that, where does that, what, what does the city require to do for somebody with Board of Adjustment usually?
Well, it's my understanding, actually, do your children go to that school?
Yes.
It's my understanding that the principal, that's where they send an email out to the parents, encouraging them to support the placement of the tower on the school.
Yes, that has happened.
There was some other extra noticing that went out besides what the city does.
Well, we went to the meeting at, on, in May that they had, and Verizon had asked for an extension and was not there, and they did not discuss it at that meeting. And I should be more savvy on how this works, but my understanding that it was, uh, open meeting and not a decision-making meeting, which is my fault as a citizen, not understanding that. But, uh, we did attempt, we weren't at the March meeting, which was where they discussed it, at, I guess the Planning Commission discussed it. I was not aware of that meeting, that information was not dispersed by the principal. Only the May decision, or the May meeting, which we did attend, which Verizon did not attend. And then we looked for another meeting in June, which they did not have, and went to the July meeting, when we were made aware of it, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's difficult to, um, we, we have a lot of noticing requirements that we have to fulfill.
I understand.
So it's difficult to place upon the city the requirement to mail out notice somehow to however many people go to that school when, you know, it's the applicant who is responsible for making the request on the private property on, quite frankly, Alpine School District, who was giving permission for that to move forward, that were the two parties involved. Um, and conditional use permits, we do have to give notice of the public hearing, it's on our website. I don't know where else to, to tell you to look. There's also a state statute that says if you have a, a land use issue that you're watching, you can come into community development and give us your name and address and request specific personal notice on any item that has to do with, uh, that address or that piece of property. So that would have been an option as well. I realize you had no idea about it.
Well, I just thought we had more common sense than to put cell towers on school properties, but I've learned that's not true. So, thank you for your time.
I do have a couple of questions, so, I'm wondering if I missed anything about the, did I miss anything about, about that she's not saying that we were aware of some policy that we're changing at the 1000 feet and that kind of.
Oh, it's the ordinance, it's actually on the agenda tonight.
The, the, the Board of Adjustment meeting, it was headed on our agenda or in our packets regarding that issue. So, Joe, just. Yeah, we try to make sure we, we. So this is gonna come to our city council until this was on our, until we heard this.
Your email was the first that most of us got that noticed this.
Is that something that you should have seen when there may have been situations like that? It was the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment, not the, those different bodies, not the city council. So, it wouldn't come before I would go to an agenda, I don't, we received a notice about that. I mean, I saw the notice, just that it was on the Board of Adjustment agenda item. I had received a couple emails from residents, and so I looked on the Board of Adjustment agenda. But beyond that, we didn't receive, it was an, it's on an agenda item we never discuss with the council. We didn't, didn't know there was communication going on between the city staff and, and Verizon. So, we weren't aware until after, just because it wouldn't have come before us if it wasn't something that the city council. But, but I understand what you're saying, as far as if we can communicate better between our other bodies that make decisions, the Planning Commission, Board of Adjustment, that we need to be doing that. So I appreciate and understand what you're saying in that regard, that if that communication can increase, then we can try and avoid situations like this, so.
Okay, and another question, um, so is there any other city property that's near there that would be an option for Verizon?
Well, they can come back to the ball field. That's, that was where we would prefer it to be.
But they want their own towers.
And that's what you're.
Looking at tonight, if you approve tonight, then they can come back to the ball field and put it on a different light pole in the ball field. And that's what the city has always wanted to happen.
And in your discussions with Verizon, has, have you been led to believe, or can you state that that is one of their, uh, considered options? Or you don't know?
I don't know. After the Board, I have not had communication with anybody after the Board of Adjustment decision, so.
So we have been working with, um, Verizon for well over a year in their attempt to locate a, a tower, a cell tower for their services. All along, we have encouraged them to co-locate with the Sprint Tower, that's in existence at the Manila Park. Uh, they have struggled in getting anything working with Sprint from the get-go. They had a lack of communication coming from Sprint for a long time, at least that was their plan. Um, so, but we, we did encourage them, uh, through many different communications to do that. Uh, they ultimately decided to, uh, go forward and ask for, uh, the, uh, Luminal Elementary site, which was denied by Planning Commission, then overturned recently by the Board of Adjustment. But, uh, we have communicated with them that, uh, we have this other thing that cities have been working on, which was actually instigated based on what's been happening in the last few months. Instigated by staff to, uh, to find another way to deal with these cell towers. And so they were aware that this was going forward, but with all their efforts and plans and time and money they have expended, uh, they just wanted to get the appeal so they would have something to do. Now, whether or not, uh, they might change their mind and then redraft everything to go back over it. Now, whether or not they might change their mind and then redraft everything to go back over at the Manila Elementary, at the Manila Park. I can't say if that's a realistic option for them. It's something that they're aware of, they could do if it gets approved, the ordinance gets approved here tonight. But so far, they have not indicated that they're interested in that.
And they're aware of other than the items tonight?
I think Tina alluded to this idea that if their recommendation is, I would start with Alpine School District. Because now they can tell them, no, they can say, we don't, we don't want you putting it on Manila Elementary. And then the school district can shut that down. The city at this point can shut them down. They have their legal process now that they have received the ruling on that they can proceed, so. Or the Manila Elementary Principal or whatever, I think that too, you probably shouldn't engage at this point if you want to see a change.
So at this point, the fourth district court could put a stay on if the Board of Adjustments, I would imagine, did not follow their own bylaws or zoning of a planning group city may be their own option. But imagine the Alpine School District has signed a lease, I believe they have, at Manila Elementary. So that may, the district's probably not an option if there is a lease in place. So the fourth district court, I think, may be on the next step.
Yeah, and I think, Tina, the situation.
Can't comment on that. That would be a private civil action that I can have to pursue.
Thank you.
Anyone else for the open session?
I actually came for something else, but, oh, my name is Jennifer Bischoff, and my address is thirteen ninety-five North, three ninety East. And I do have a question now after this is brought up. First, I want to make a statement that I think that CUPs are given out too freely. I think that we need to tighten up ordinances in our city and then quit making exceptions because we're running into lots of problems, and I'm hearing of another one tonight. And if you are looking at changing the distance from a thousand feet, could Manila end up with another cell tower on their property? You know, I mean, that's something I think you guys need to consider possibly before you necessarily make that decision because, I mean, my son's not there anymore, but we've had this. I love Manila, we've been there for eighteen years, all my children have gone there. And you don't want to see, in the name of money, which is really the motivator in all this, children having, you know, adverse effects to cellphone towers, or cellphone towers that could be all over your school property. So the real reason I came here tonight is, last week, my neighbor had a motorcycle and a little kid racer stolen off the side of her house. And in the process of looking through the surveillance video, she noticed a car stopped in front of my house and someone got out and walked into the yard. Then they drove and stopped in front of her house, they didn't get out. And then they drove to another neighbor's house, stopped and got out. And so this caught her attention because she was looking for someone that might have stolen her kid's toys. And so she showed it to me, and I could immediately see that it was a city employee car or a city car because it had the PG sticker in the window. But it was three thirty in the morning, and so I said to her, you know, and I'm not saying anyone from the city stole the stuff, but it caused me to think, what are they doing in my yard at three thirty in the morning? It happened on July fifteenth at three thirty in the morning. I have an odd number house, so if I was watering, if they were checking for water violations or something, it was legal for me to be watering then. It just, it's a concern to me. And also, it feels like a violation of your personal property to see someone walking in there at three thirty in the morning. I think of my sweet little neighbor across the street who's a widow that would be scared to death if she saw a stranger in her yard at three thirty in the morning. I don't know if they were, you know, checking meters or whatnot, but it's not stuff that can be done. Either if they're looking for violations, just drive through a cul-de-sac or drive through. Why do they have to be getting out and looking in yards? Or if they're reading meters, that should be done during the day. I've seen meter readers on their golf carts coming through, you know, so, and that's during the day. So honestly, I don't know what was going on. I still don't know because my other neighbor has an even number house, and they went into her yard. But it's a concern, and I just wanted to bring it up because I feel a little violated, so.
You mentioned that there was surveillance video, is that private residence?
Yes, a private residence. And so we saw the actual people that came. Well, you can't really get a good picture because they must have known, they came in a different way, so you only see a clip of them coming. But this happened to, you know, catch her attention as she went through. And it made me think, how often does this happen that I don't know about? You know, I feel like we should have a certain level of, you know, peace that we don't have, people going through our yards at that time of night.
It'd be a bad situation if somebody announced in your yard.
Well, it could be dangerous for a city employee too, quite frankly. Someone, lots of people have guns and would feel no problem protecting their property with a gun, you know, at the middle of the night.
Let's ask our public works director Marty, you know, what's good procedure when we are doing water enforcement, as you see out of the truck? What do they do?
Well, I understand that that's the time that people are watering, and so that's the time that we have these people going out and checking and trying to look if there are any issues with people watering on. And I don't know why, maybe they were mistaken on an address on the wrong side of the street, and then they went the other side type of thing as to why they would check the even numbers and not just the odd numbers on that day. So I don't know why they would have done that, but sometimes they might get a notice from somebody saying, hey, this person's watering his backyard at night or something. In those instances, I would say that maybe that's what they're doing. However, I don't know if that's the policy. We probably need to talk about that over and over again, we're fairly new at this and what they do. I know that they're out at night, I know they're checking to see who's watering, and there are tickets that are being issued, probably nightly, that we are finding that we're not following well.
Well, and I have to admit, we did get a notice because I didn't realize, we know we're watering with the sprinklers, but we did water a dry patch with the hose, and that apparently is not legal on my, you know, on my off day, which I heard people say that they are not aware that you can't even turn your, you know, your hose on that's hooked up to the secondary water. I wasn't aware of that, and so we got a notice, but we water on our assigned days, so.
And that's why, and we find a lot of people that turn their hose off and just keep it on all day long.
Right.
Those things obviously are issues if it's for a few minutes or something like that. Like, you wouldn't see it during the day anyways, but.
So Marty, is that something you can adjust with the water enforcement officers, about going to the backyard and maybe, because I think that could be an issue, is using it not only to be a public, but also a homeowner?
Yeah, when we initially put the program in place, the direction was not to, if they saw a violation, they were supposed to write it down, that the door hanger was going the next day. We did not want them in the middle of the night approaching people's doors and putting door hangers on. If that's been lost in translation in the last two years we've been doing this, we need to revisit that. Sprinklers in the backyard and things like that, I, we don't want city employees on private property at three thirty in the morning. So we'll get that one resolved. Did your door hanger come in the middle of the night?
No, 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 he came up to my door with, and that was a while ago. You know what I mean, I'm just saying, so maybe, yeah, it was a separate day. But even so, even if they were looking to see if I was violating something, I was, it was on a day that it would have been okay for me to be running my sprinklers in the middle of the night if I chose to do that. Does that make sense? So.
Okay, so Marty, you already do it with water enforcement officers, and then we can review the policy, make sure they're not. I mean, I would say, what about even during the day, going walking to someone's backyard, is that, is that something we want to be doing?
Well, I would say that they should probably go to the doors first and not in transition. They've all, at least the instances that I've heard of that happening where they've noticed something, they always try to notify the resident first by going to the door, is what I understand. And then after that, they may go peek their head in the backyard and make sure that something's not, if they can hear it, or something just to verify that it is what they think it is. But maybe we need to talk about that policy as well as far as private property access and things of that nature.
There's some of us that's like the sunbather. So I don't know, I don't know how to be comfortable with the whole backyard thing. I.
So we'll, we'll.
They're in city shirts.
But at three thirty in the morning, you can't see a city shirt, so.
Yeah, I mean, if my kids were in the backyard and someone came in, I don't know, that would be, I don't know. So, yeah, if we can address that.
Well, and honestly, if you're watering in the backyard, you're going to see driveway and sidewalks and stuff wet from the front yard because most people have their sprinklers on a timer system. And I can't imagine that it's only doing the backyard if they're violating things, so.
I appreciate you bringing this around.
Anyway, so.
It's going to protect both the city employee and the homeowner, and Scott will work with Marty on getting that.
Okay.
Making sure that policy's enforced, and if there's anything regarding the backyard that the employees aren't aware of, I, they are, I, at this point, the council's comfortable just saying, just not incorporate to an underpowered property. We'll leave a notice on the door, they can contact Public Works at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Are you, are you?
No, that's fine, I just wanted to bring it to you, thank you.
I had a couple of questions, Jen, before you sit down.
Oh, yes.
Have you shared that surveillance video with the city staff?
No, I've got a picture, she took a picture and gave it to me. You can see the date, the, you know, it's clearly the middle of the night.
It's possible for law enforcement professionals to identify the very vehicle, or we could do some kind of investigation on this specific incident and see if there's.
I'm pretty comfortable that it was, you know, my guess is that it was looking for water violations, but it bothered me when it was happening, so.
So can I just do one little follow-up? As far as this is concerned, is, can we get that back next week and have a follow-up? And then who will be contacting Jennifer to let her know?
Yeah, because I won't do it next week.
It's, there's not a formal policy on it, it's just our practice and internal policy.
Right, but I would like to have some follow-up next week as to how that was handled this week.
No problem, yeah, I mean, we, I can tell you right now how it's going to go. We're going to tell our employees not to get out of the car in the middle of the night and come and do that.
Okay.
We'll address backyards during the day and see if there's a way, whether it's a visual from the side of the street and not actually walking back there. So we'll.
We'll just follow up with some kind of communication next week, and then somebody get with Jennifer.
Thank you. Thank you.
As far as issue with the hose, if it's on your day and you're watering with the hose, is there a different policy?
Not, I mean, right now, even if you're with culinary and you're on the wrong day, that is a violation. It doesn't matter if it's culinary or secondary because we don't know, per se, what the source of the water is.
Can I, can I just make a comment to that? Because when I asked him about that, he told me if I wanted to water my dry spots on my off day, I needed to hook my hose up to the culinary system, which I thought was crazy because it's more, you know what I mean?
But that's on the off day, right?
That's on the off day, so, but what you're saying is it doesn't matter whether it's culinary or secondary. You can't water on your.
It's just enforcement-wise, we don't know.
Right, no, I mean, that makes sense, but that's different than what I was told.
We need to go back to our people and make sure they're giving.
Okay, so, okay, thanks.
Are our enforcement guys that do the water work, are they new? Are they the ones we've had the same two years, have we kept the same one or?
I don't know.
I don't know the answer to that, I don't tell you jokes.
Yeah, it's, they're, they're.
Yeah, I'd be just curious, can we get a follow-up in a week, kind of understand the process? Do they get a background check, I mean, things are going missing, I just want to make sure that we're doing a thorough, thorough hiring process.
The one problem is, is that we've filled every one of the water, you know, around ten P M. So we've asked everybody to water at three A M. And so now we're, you know, if they see water running down the duders, I know that they need to be respectful, but they also need to find out who's violating the watering, so.
And I don't want to imply anyway that we assume that our public works employees are stealing people's property, so I want to make sure that's clear that we're not implying that. And I know, Jen, you did not imply that at all, but as a council, we are not implying that. I don't think that's appropriate to imply that.
Anyone else for open session? Hi.
Yeah, sorry. My name is Randy Sloat, I'm at six eighty-six West. S L O A T. I'm at six eighty-six West, sixteen fifty North in Pleasant Grove. I'm here about the Verizon tower thing. I'm not trying to bounce back and forth between subjects and that type of thing, but there's a great concern about it still. And the way things were followed. And if the district court is my only option, then so be it. But if, if there is a, I've been here since the beginning on it. From the communication that went out, the sorry communication, that was the size of a playing card, maybe, that came out in Q bond day in the mail, to the first meeting where three of us showed up and were able to get the planning commission to deny it, then to see it overturned by the adjustments board or whatnot, and then now to this point. And it's kind of funny how the story has changed through that length of time. At first, it started out with Verizon saying, oh, we can't get, we can't get in touch with these people at all. With Sprint, with carriers, with anything like that. Okay, that's what it started out with. So in the first meeting, it was asked that they communicate and try and co-locate to the best of their abilities. So next, next meeting, the Board of Adjustments meeting, same kind of story. There's no communication, there's no, nothing had happened. They tried, they've done their due diligence, they've tried their hardest to, to make it happen, and they couldn't. And so then we come from here tonight, and the thing is, I'm in the industry, so I know what they're looking for. And unfortunately, money is the biggest motivator here for everybody because by law, we can't, we can't use anything else as a reason, so. And so to see, to see how this story has changed, to see there's no communication with it, and then to hear the story that I thought all along, being in the industry, of they had that option, they were provided that option, but they didn't want to take it. They wanted to go specifically for the Manila option. It is, it's just, it's very frustrating. And then also to still not see any proof of communication on it throughout this entire process, and only to hear through several other people what actually happened. So the other thing that I'm here about is just, you know, like I said, there's certain things by law that we just can't cite for reasons to push this tower off. And as much as I hate it, that's the way it is. But there was one thing that was within law that was brought up at the first meeting, and it wasn't held, which was somehow pushed to the very beginning of this. And I knew and stated this in the first meeting, that that can't be stated by law as a reason to deny it. I knew that, and that was somehow pushed to the forefront of the meeting. And that's, of course, what Verizon came in and placed on the slideshow most, was the fact that you can't use health as it. Throughout the meeting, though, sorry to get into the point, is that in the code, it has to fit in to the community, to the neighborhood. And that was the only thing that people could debate because everything else is locked down by law. So we debated that. A cell tower doesn't fit in to this community. There's nothing else around even remotely like it, other than the park, which is Manila Park. That's the closest thing. That's why we've pushed for the tower to be moved there because it lines up with it. There's towers, there's poles, there's chain link vents. They're high, they're forty feet high or whatnot, and you've got light posts. I mean, you've got everything there, this cell tower fits in that environment. I mean, you come to this sign right out here, and it says, promote an attractive and sustainable environment. And a cellphone tower is not attractive. That is the only thing that we can push, and at this Board of Adjustments meeting, that was completely blatantly thrown aside as something like, it's not only the only thing that we can fight, but it's also within city code. And so to have that as our only out, to be completely just neglected, and for some reason, there was a fire under people to pass that thing that night. There was no continuation. Verizon continued that meeting, I don't know, two months? I mean, the original meeting happened back in March. So May, I think they lined one up and then they continued it. June, they lined one up and they continued it. And I've showed up for each one of those. It's very frustrating when a meeting is continued and you've made time personally to come to the meeting and only to find out that it's been continued. So it doesn't belong. To miss it by, to miss the ordinance that was passed or going to be passed tonight, I guess, if you guys approve it, of the whole hundred and fifty foot thing, to miss that by two weeks within the Board of Adjustments is really kind of bad, and that was also brought up as a concern in the meeting a couple of weeks ago. I do fear for the same thing that this lady brought up about a second cell tower going in on that property. So I do think, while I want it so that it can fit in the ballpark, I am concerned about it at other places. I just, I just think that better judgment needs to be had when making decisions, especially with something like this. And it's not just the city, it is the representatives of the school, the district. And it's not just the city, it is the representatives of the school, the district, the principal, and the community board, I think is what they call it, community council, speaking for the residents of that area. That decision should not have been made, and if we have to go to the school board or school district to talk about it and have it refuted, I guess, and, and the, the district court, I guess that's the way it's gonna be, but messed up, so. Anyway, that's all.
Anyone else?
Just real quick, I was gonna wait till staff business, but I don't wanna make him wait the whole meeting. So if I could have Detective Pedersen come in, I think he's out there somewhere. I received a letter from the Utah County Major Crimes Task Force, which our Detective Pedersen, who's one of our officers, is assigned to that task force right now. And I just wanted to bring him in and give him a little recognition for a job very well done. And I'll just read this letter to you. The Utah County Major Crimes Task Force concluded a two-month Title III investigation into a group known as the Fernando Organization. This group had ties directly to Mexico and was involved in the transportation of heroin to Oregon and Utah. The task force started the Title III investigation on April 24th and ended on June 23rd. The task force arrested fifteen suspects in this drug trafficking organization, whose job duties include major distributors, dealers, dispatchers, and runners. This investigation was extremely difficult due to the fact that this group had been investigated by the DEA once before. They were extremely cautious and it made it very difficult for our task force to conduct some surveillance on them. This Title III operation intercepted ten phone lines and positioned seven pole cameras in strategic places in order to complete this investigation. The task force spent thousands of hours to bring this complicated investigation to a conclusion. This was truly a team effort by members of the Utah County Major Crimes Task Force. Our case officer was Chad Pedersen. He was responsible for the general operation of this complicated, successful Title III investigation. I feel it is my duty and obligation to express my appreciation for the outstanding job Detective Chad Pedersen did in this investigation. The task force arrested fifteen suspects and seized twenty pounds of heroin. This represents a street value of nine hundred and eight thousand dollars. This is one of the larger seizures, seizures of heroin on a Title III investigation that the task force has been involved in. There is no question that Detective Chad Pedersen has made our community a safer place to live. On behalf of all of our communities in Utah County and the state of Utah, I want to express my appreciation for his time, effort, and dedication. Law enforcement cannot function effectively without the support of their families who stands behind them. Therefore, I want to thank his family for their support during this late, lengthy investigation. Sincerely, Lieutenant Dennis Harris, Field Commander, Utah County Major Crimes Task Force. I don't have a big award for you, I'll give you a copy of the letter and tell you how much I, I appreciate you. We put people on that task force and we want them to shine, and Chad has done that. He is a, a great example of what Pleasant Grove has to offer on a county and state level, and he has really done a great job, and I'll make sure a copy of this gets in your file. Thank you, Chad.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the open session and move to our consent agenda items. These are items that have been discussed beforehand, are non-controversial, do not require further discussion. They include our city council media minutes, a payment request to grow construction, and consider a paid bachelor's for July 10th. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda items, or is there, are there any questions?
Ma'am, just again, do you have a question?
I'd love to have an update, is the micro hydro a Blue Energy project?
It's Blue Energy.
How's it going?
It's under construction and underway. I, I don't, he's the one who oversees that project, so I don't want.
Yeah, it's a great project.
Motion by Eric, seconded by Diana, all in favor?
I agree.
Okay, um, we'll go ahead and move to agenda item 7A, which is to consider the appointment of Nils Fugel as the Mudhole Neighborhood Chair. Is that, who's presenting, is that?
Nils is here.
Nils is chair?
And we can have him kinda tell us a little bit about himself.
Oh, sure, thanks. My name is Nils Fugel, and I've lived in Pleasant Grove most of my life, moved to other states, and have moved back to the best city in the world. I was asked if I would like to be a neighborhood chair, and I said, yes, sure, it'll be fun. That's my quick, short answer, it'll be fun, it'll be a lot of work, but it will be nice to be, continue to be involved in the community. And it's the Mudhole area, how many know where the Mudhole area is? It's the last area in Pleasant Grove that could dry out after the spring rains and the runoff. So it's out about fourteen hundred west and eighth north, that's where I live, right in that area. So that was the last of the fields to dry out, thus the Mudhole area. So, thank you, appreciate this. Oh, thank you. Thanks.
Now you have an official title.
Well, great, we appreciate it, thank you. Counsel, I moved the appointment of Nils Fugel as the Mudhole Neighborhood Chair.
Motion by Ben, seconded by favor, uh-huh, by favor, by Eric. Here we have our presentation now, agenda item 8A, this will be by Chief, oh, Jack.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for having me. As you mentioned, my name is Jeff Buman, I'm the county attorney. Before I begin, actually, I'd like to express my appreciation for the support that your department and the council shows for the Major Crimes Task Force. Excuse me, actually, the level of drug interdiction that they conduct, I think, would surprise most citizens. There is a lot of particularly heroin moving through and around Utah and Utah County, and they've done a tremendous job interdicting that in trying to dismantle or disrupt these large drug trafficking organizations, which are primarily based out of Mexico. So kudos to them, I know it takes financial support, and as a county attorney, we're grateful because it really improves the safety of all citizens of Utah County, so thank you. But what I'm here for is actually to talk about the professionalism and dedication of your police department. About, I'm not even sure dates anymore, it seems like it was a year, year and a half ago, I received a call driving back from Salt Lake from one of my prosecutors that they had a, a death of a baby that had been found in Pleasant Grove. And over the next few hours, I think detectives found a baby after baby. As you well know, the person who committed those atrocities was Megan Huntsman, and she's currently in the state prison. The reason I'm here is because over many years, our office has done, even in Utah County, which is a very, very safe community, we do have homicides here, we're five hundred and almost fifty thousand people. And in fact, last year, our office closed almost fifteen homicides, not all dramatic like this one, but some were automobile homicides. Some in the scale of things relatively minor, I don't mean to diminish the importance, but we do have crime here. And this stood out because of the heinousness of what occurred, six babies that we know of for sure. But it also stood out because of the, the dedication and professionalism of the police department. We've done many homicide cases over the years, and I don't think we've ever seen better police work conducted more professionally and more timely than was done in this case here. I don't think I've ever seen a case of this magnitude kind of sail through the system because there really wasn't a lot of defense for Ms. Huntsman to put on. The police department had wrapped up, they dotted every I, they crossed every T, they'd even gone deeper than we, than we asked them to do. We were, we had a meeting where we talked about duct tape and fingerprints, and frankly, we were saying, well, we're, we're okay if you don't go that deep. And they said, no, we're gonna go that deep, and they did, and that did, it didn't produce additional evidence, but it, it foreclosed arguments by the defense. So it was, in, in a sense, it saved taxpayers tremendous amounts of money because of the efforts of the police department. We didn't have to put as many resources into it from our office, and frankly, the public defender was somewhat trapped because they couldn't provide her the level of maybe representation they wanted to, or the cost that they would have had to incur because they, they did such great work. So I have a plaque, I know it's not tickets to Disneyland, but we'd like to recognize Chief Smith and the detectives and officers that participated in that investigation, and if I could quickly read it. It says, presented to the Pleasant Grove Police Department, State of Utah versus Megan Huntsman Investigation Team. In recognition of your outstanding professionalism and thoroughness, your attention to detail, determination to uncover the truth, and adherence to the highest professional standards while conducting this sensitive and highly publicized homicide investigation led to six murder convictions and reflect great credit upon the Pleasant Grove Police Department and the City of Pleasant Grove from April 12, 2014 until April 20, 2015. And I would note, she doesn't have a parole date for almost fifty years, so thank you.
Again, thank you for having me.
Chief Smith, any, any words?
You know what, I can't say enough about the team that we have here in Pleasant Grove. I know the council's heard it before, but an amazing group of people, not just the sworn officers, but all of our, our staff, our civilian staff, our dispatch center, it's just, it's a joy to work with them. And I, I wish the residents of Pleasant Grove understood better how fortunate they are. I've worked with law enforcement all throughout the state, and you have a good group of law enforcement professionals in this city, and I'm, I'm grateful to, to work with them and be part of them.
And as you said, I don't think we have any idea what you do on a daily basis, and then there's a huge case that comes along like this that affects you emotionally and physically, and, and we just don't have any idea. So I mean, half the city just thinks you call you every day for, to keep our community safe and to put away the bad guys and to, you know, just make things better here in Pleasant Grove, so thank you so much.
I'd, I'd like to thank County Attorney Buman for, for doing that, that's, thank you for recognizing these guys, they, they deserve it, so, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming tonight, I appreciate you. Okay, we'll go ahead and continue with, we're on agenda item 9A, which is the public hearing with that ordinance 2015-27, amending the municipal city code, section 10-15-66-D, commercial communications applicable citywide, reducing our one thousand-foot distance between cell towers. And this is presented by Dr. Young.
Okay, counsel, this is the ordinance you've heard so much talk about, the demands of us actually talking about. So this ordinance did come about following concerns and discussions about cell towers and their placement and what the options were in the community. So staff did review this and has taken it forward to the planning commission for their review, and they, excuse me, unanimously recommended to you the approval of this proposal. Sorry, I'll grab some of that for you. So some of this has already been discussed tonight, but just as a brief review, the planning commission denied the request at the Manila Elementary School. The Board of Adjustment approved the appeal, which also approved the conditional use permit. City Council is unable to review overturn, any further appeal goes to district court, and the new code will not affect Verizon unless they choose to take advantage of it. The intent of this ordinance is to allow more reasonable tower location opportunities. What basically it does is reduce the required separation of a thousand feet to a hundred and fifty feet on public property with supporting infrastructure, and require that co-location on public property occur when it is requested. There was a suggestion, as we were talking about this from the city attorney, that perhaps if there is sufficient concern about a hundred and fifty feet allowing an additional cell tower to occur on school property, that we could change the verbiage "public property" to "city-owned property." That would take it away from the, the schools, it doesn't mean it couldn't happen on school properties, it just means this, the reduced separation would be permissible on city-owned property. So if that's something you're interested in, that's something we could easily change. Okay, so that's basically all we're doing on the, the ordinance. If you'd like to have me read the specific verbiage that is being applied in the ordinance that's before you, we can do that.
Can I just go ahead and, oh, sorry.
Sorry, can I just make a couple comments before we move forward? Just in explanation, the specific changes are to full, number one, to allow the closer placement of cell towers on public property to encourage the co-location at locations that we want them to be closer. But the other thing is too, and this addresses some of the concerns from the residents in the Manila school area, part of the problem was that it really was difficult to get the primary locator, which happened to be Sprint, to cooperate in a timely fashion, and there was very little that we could do about that. So the ordinance amendment actually puts some teeth into our already existing requirement to allow co-location in that it, it says that if they do not allow it, then their, their conditional use permit can be revoked. So it gives us a little more power over making sure that the providers play nice in the sandbox and cooperate with each other. I wanna make sure that's pointed out for those of you who are concerned about that. The other thing is, Ken, is you and I just briefly whispered the idea of changing the, the language to municipal-owned property. But Dagan has pointed out that there is a pending project on the high school property where we actually want them to be able to make the next cell tower closer. We don't want, we don't want it to go on a thousand feet, so.
So, I'm sorry, there's a new pending tower, other than what has just recently been approved up there at the high school?
Well, that was the idea, it was what they were, they ended up by the rec center. Where they're supposed, because they had to be a thousand feet away.
Right.
They wanted to replace one of the light standards at the baseball field, which had them within a thousand feet radius. So if we restrict it only to municipal property, then the cell tower at the rec center is again, that's their choice to be there.
Or otherwise, they could have put in on the school.
The school ball fields. Perhaps we could add some type of verbiage that would restrict it to public properties where there are existing light pole facilities or similar facilities? I don't know what verbiage we would use, but that, that would allow it to occur on school properties where they have ball fields.
I, I, I just think if, if we're gonna do that, we probably need to involve the school district so they have a chance to comment on that.
Yeah.
If we're gonna make a decision on that tonight, then I don't know if that's something we wanna take it back to city. If we're gonna exempt the school district out of this, I think they need a chance to respond to that.
Did they, did we ask them when we included them?
Well, just, when they approached us a year ago and said, we wanna put a cell tower on the high school, the baseball field, and we told them, you can't. And so they said, all right, instead of that, we're gonna move it right next to the rec center. And so we're gonna put it there to meet our one thousand feet, still school property, but it was gonna be in the area where, was gonna change things, the kind of thing that's gonna be the area where we have our, our Sunday night concert. And so we told the school, hey, we, we gotta figure something else out here. And so they're aware that this thousand-foot thing could go away, because they would, I think they're working with AT&amp;T. They would like to be able to tell AT&amp;T, the city is not requiring a thousand-foot anymore, we can put you back on the ball field, which.
Which is a better spot.
Which would serve everybody better for it to be there. So it's one of those where the Manila situation's a little different, it would serve everybody better if they could be at Discovery Park. In this other situation, it would serve everybody better if they could be at the high school ball field. And so if, if we, if we change this to say we're, we're gonna exempt the school district out of that. and in one case it works and in one case it doesn't. So I don't know if we need to involve our high school district, other than we just need to be aware of the thing.
If you have supporting infrastructure, if that gets more descriptive, then you could say, you used, you've used a couple of words there on already existing...
Existing light poles or similar structures.
Ken, you wanna go ahead and read what you have in the public hearing?
Sure. So this is modifying the verbiage in Section 10-15-36-D of the supplementary development standards. And so the actual suggested amendment occurs with letter D.
It's E, little e, E1.
It's actually D4, little e1. Multiple users is little e, and then 1 is, so it's getting towards the end there saying, well, I've just better read multiple users. This part is not yet being changed. Multiple users, all towers are to be designed to accommodate three separate users. A letter must also be supplied stating that the owners of the tower will allow for co-location and that the structure has been constructed to allow for this unless grid documentation is supplied by an independent consultant. That co-location will create a hardship. Only one conditional use permit approval shall be required unless the tower or ground equipment is expanded, at which time the existing CUP or conditional use permit is to be modified. So what's being added is, number one, towers with available co-location points located on public property will be required to allow co-location at Pleasant Grove City's request. Failure to respond to a written request from Pleasant Grove City within 30 days of the request may result in revocation of the conditional use permit. Number two, failure to allow co-location where available may also result in revocation of the conditional use permit. So those are two suggested add-ons to the code. And then going down to little letter H, separation, commercial communication towers shall have a minimum separation requirement of 1,000 feet. This was a standard that when we reviewed this particular code about five, six years ago, we reviewed other communities and their distance requirements. And this was used in other cities, so we utilized that. Not based on any other scientific studies necessarily, but the concept was, we don't want to have cellphone tower farms or forests in one location. We want to have them spread out more. So then the suggestion is that number one underneath that be added. Cell tower separation may be reduced to 150 feet, provided it is located on public property and attached to an existing pole or building infrastructure with the ability to accommodate communication equipment. So I'm wondering now, by reading through that again, Tina, maybe you can help, is public property and attached to an existing pole or building infrastructure with the ability to accommodate communication equipment. That would basically rule out an elementary school that doesn't already have a tower.
Right.
So perhaps there is nothing, no needed change here.
Because that would also allow the school to put it on the high school.
Yeah.
Because the tower's already there.
Right.
I think the language already accommodates that. Anyone else, Ken, or any other questions for Ken?
That's all that's being proposed for change in the ordinance.
Can they attach to a light pole, a, a, not a light pole, a power pole?
Most likely not. I suppose that would have to be looked at with the power company, but we're concerned that there's sufficient structure available for that to occur. It would be up to them to determine if that's something that is feasible.
They don't, they don't attach to existing light poles. They replace the light pole with a new one.
That's right.
And reattach the luminaires on it.
That's right.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open this up for public hearing. If anyone wants to make comments.
I would just, I did not know about the high school, so I'd just like to make a couple comments. I am aware that we can't argue on the basis of health and wellness, but I'd just like to read a couple things so it's on the record. That the World Health Organization in 2011 categorized RF radiation, which is what comes off of cell towers, as a possible carcinogen based on the research over, by over 30 scientists. And the FCC, who makes the guidelines of what is safe and what is not, after writing the rules in 1996, notes that studies showing relatively low levels of RF radiation, which is what they tell us come off those poles, can cause certain changes in the immune system, neurological effects, behavioral effects, and other health issues, including cancer. Obviously, this is still something that's under a lot of scientific, they're researching it still. So before you make a decision on this, on how it would affect high school or how it would affect elementary schools, I would just say that I believe we can work within the restrictions of the 1996 Federal Communications Act that allow us to protect our citizens, especially those who are most vulnerable. And that includes high school students. I think that we, we start to think, oh, we need one here and we need one there. But, but in the end, and I'm a cellphone user, I'm not against them, but I do think we should think of the places where these kids spend the most time, when they're in developmental phases, and come up with city codes that helps us protect them. And this may be too late for Manila, but it might not be too late to stop an additional one being at the high school or one being placed at another elementary school somewhere else. And I would just ask that before you agree on how to change the code, that you think through all of the wording and how that will affect the most vulnerable of our citizens in this city. Because it bothers me that the federal government is playing an overarching arm and telling us how we can or cannot protect people. But you, as a city council, can create ordinances that does that. And people would appreciate that.
Anyone else for the public hearing?
This is probably the last you'll hear from the squoys, but it may be worthwhile to consider in the language what height recommendations you can have on the pole, so co-location's actually possible. We heard in the case of the park, the co-location was not possible. In fact, Sprint said, my understanding is they said, that's okay. They're gonna be at 60, 65 feet. Now, the higher it gets, the more of a public nuisance it is. But the lower it is, the more towers you're gonna have spring up because they'll have an argument to say, we can't co-locate, especially for third on the rung. So I would also consider that language on height and co-location. Thanks.
So what is our part, so you can refresh that?
We have three listed, right?
Yeah, we already have three heights listed. I'm sorry, I went back that. So they can be 70 feet, 80 feet, 90 feet, and 100 feet. That's already in the ordinance. And then depending on how tall they are, they have a restriction. They have to be a corresponding further distance away from the residential property line. So if it's a 70-foot tower, they have to be 150 feet from the residential property line. And it goes up from there. If you're a 100-foot tower, you have to be 225 feet from the residential property line.
So I have a question. Oh, can we even, sorry.
No, I was just looking.
So I have a question. Can we, as a city, municipality, restrict them out of our city?
No.
And why is that?
We wouldn't have service. The federal telecommunications act.
Okay. So we wouldn't have service. Well, I know.
The first thing was, is I was just talking to Sprint like three days ago, begging them to get a tower. So I apologize.
So...
I'm a user.
Right, but, so that, that's, we, as a municipality, can put on restrictions and control where they go.
To some extent.
To some extent. But we, even though it is a federal thing, we cannot restrict them beyond the ability for them to be in our city.
Yes, we can't, you can't say no cell towers in Pleasant Grove City.
Okay.
Can't we just not do that on the basis of health? Wasn't that what the...
They have to follow city code. So you can make a code that says that it can't be, I mean, we have a code that says it can't be 150 feet from residential property. And Verizon has to adhere to that. So there can be codes that protect the children or citizens. You just can't say you can't have any of them.
Right.
You can't do it on the basis of health.
It's so restrictive that it means to be, or trying to not have them.
Right. You're always gonna have them, and as a cell user, I like having service as well. So my, our argument is, let's put them in the best locations. Where are the best locations for these? And in our argument, it is not on school properties. Now Alpine School District is always gonna argue that they want them because they get money from them. And I don't have faith that those people are always taking into account the health and wellness of the kids. They're taking into account how much money they're receiving.
So I know we have one on the seven-foot property.
That one hasn't been built yet, but when they...
Well, that was five years ago.
So that's a great place, because the home security will not affect them.
But I was on my commission, and we still have people come in, and we're very worried. So, but can we zone them out of a, a school?
Well, I mean, here's my thing. Again, I'm putting this back on Alpine School District. They can say no. We can't say no of the city. We can restrict, but Alpine School District can say, we have a policy. We're not allowing cell towers on our school property.
But because they embrace it for...
That's, that's the issue with Alpine.
I know.
That's, that's me for the argument.
Because I saw a lot of comments that say, let's support Manila Elementary. I'm putting it on, on property. So you're getting both sides of the, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
From citizens, you're getting, come on, let's get it put on Manila Elementary. And you have the other schools that have the ones saying, don't put a deficit if that's okay.
Just purely out of curiosity, I'm not in this industry, but how much money do cell providers give your school district?
At least it's about $1,000 to $1,500 a month for the first users.
We're told it was $20,000 over some term. They're usually 50-year terms, 20- to 50-year terms. So once it's there, it's there for a long time. And it is of great value to the school. We're told also that the money will go directly to Manila, which is great. But I'd rather personally do a lot more fundraisers and maybe pay a little more property tax than have that.
And I think we want to clarify, when we were talking about distance on the cell towers, one of the problems that you're having is Sprint is saying, well, you can only be this high. And it's just another one of those loopholes that the cellphone companies are using to control you and say, well, you can only put it at this height, which doesn't actually help Verizon. But it might be something that you want in the verbiage that makes the cell tower companies have to give certain height to their co-locators so that it encourages them to co-locate.
My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ken, wherever you went, my understanding is, is the reason why they said they can only be the 60 to 67 feet up is because they had already planned to have some other people co-locate on the tower. And that was the only spot that was left.
One of that was the deal with the seven-foot, is that AT&amp;T, the AT&amp;T that was the original.
T-Mobile.
T-Mobile.
We can look, we can put something in there.
You have three co-locations, doesn't do you any good in the ordinance if you don't. If the third co-locator isn't high enough to actually comply with the ordinance.
I'm not aware of how tall this pole is that we're discussing, so...
It's 70 feet.
So that's why. So if we, if we need everybody do a 100-foot tower pole to begin with, then they could fit three people on there. But it's because the original tower's only 70 feet. That, that limits how many co-locators you can have and how high they can be on the pole, right?
Except for in Manila Park, it is 100 feet, so... But they have two other companies that they're working with, they say, that are ahead of Verizon now. I don't know, you know, this is all hearsay, what's coming from Verizon, what they've been told by Sprint, but the story was, I guess I should stand up here. The story was all along that Sprint was not communicating with them, that they would, they would say, okay, we'll get back with you, we'll get back with you. Well, when the original application went through, it used to be, it was approved to be a Clearwire Tower. That's what the company was that owned the tower initially. But when Verizon approached them, they were in a acquisition phase, or Sprint was, in purchasing the tower from Clearwire. So there was this not sure what they're doing or what we want to do type thing. And so that stalled the communications for a while. And then there was a lack of communications, a lack of response as to what they could or needed to do. It wasn't until, as per the Verizon representatives at the Board of Adjustment meeting, it wasn't until just recently that they were told, well, sorry, we've got two others ahead of you, but yeah, if you want, you can, you can be the fourth one on our tower. So that was, of course, unacceptable to them. But, so for us as a city to get so deeply involved in the arrangements of telecommunications companies and who's gonna do what with the co-location, I'm not sure how deeply involved we can get with that. The, by tightening up our ordinance here, by saying that we do require it, that by notification from the city, that they are required to allow that to occur. And if they don't, then they, we can revoke the conditional use, which means they have to take the tower down. So I think we have a lot of teeth in it right now, but to get so deeply involved into where and how much and who and when the co-location is to occur, I'm not sure we're, we should be doing that.
So my suggestion...
If your question just comes from over, yeah.
So, so Safe Sprint is the first person that puts in the tower. Do they only put it to the height that they need? Or are they required as the first person to put it to the total height for the other people?
Sorry.
They're not gonna require them to build a 100-foot tower every time.
There are different options.
Yeah, we do allow them options there. So when the Clearwire was initially built, it was built at 70, and then some, it was added up to 100. So they can do that with these towers. They can do initially 70 and then add to 100. So the co-locator can pay for the additional tower. For us to require upfront 100 feet of all cellphone companies, you know, that's, that's, I'm not sure if that's fair.
Sure.
Because they don't need the 100 feet for one. But when someone else wants to co-locate, they add the additional height.
I just have a question. Is this going to only affect from tonight forward? Or people that are in the, you know, it won't affect anyone that's already been given permission? So they are kind of grandfather, you know?
They went through their due diligence already.
Right, so when, when they say that had this been in place, really, there's nothing they could have done to Sprint with this ordinance because they are going off of old rules. Correct?
Neil, did you have a comment?
I do. I've been sitting here chopping at the bit. In regards to the cell towers, I'm a volunteer parent on school, school community councils for the last 14 years. And I sat in that meeting at Manila Elementary when the school community council, the parents that were there, mothers, had to determine whether to have a, allow a cell site at that location. There was a lot of discussion, well, where would that cell site be? And come to find out, it would be really close to the school, built on the northeast corner. It was the school community council's vote that that would be permissible. The upside to it, well, let's talk about the downside because there's no real hard evidence that there's a health concern with a cell tower. Electronics is a hobby of mine. And I had the first telephone in the car, which was a 35-watt system, mounted in my trunk, much like the police officers. Aren't those about 35 watt now? The portables are 5 watt, correct? Yeah. And it's my understanding that the cell towers put out 5 watts on those channels, not 35 watt like some of the major communications that the police use. But I think what is a greater, this is the point, the greater concern is that cellphone that puts out a half watt that's right up against our heads all the time. And our kids that are sent to school with cell phones with that half watt right against their brain. So my point is, 5 watt being emitted... So my point is, five watt being emitted from the cell towers is not a concern. But I agree that it really ought to be, um, how to say it, exhaust all possibilities of any health concern. But right now, there isn't any conclusive evidence. You know, what I've found is opinions are like belly buttons. May use another term, but everybody has one. And it's amazing, these groups on the internet, I was just looking up a few, you know, health concerns or not on, uh, my cellphone on the web, and there's nothing that's conclusive that way. So that's why you can't address it from a health concern. And in my logic, it doesn't appear that it is a health concern. But I want safety for our kids, whatever that is. So, um, what else did I want to make, uh, mention to that? So I've been involved in that and also my, uh, home farm that I grew up on is where that Discovery Park is. I milked cows on that side. I, I love that, that area that is now owned by the city, the park. And, oh, and this is my final point. That the, it was, uh, determined by the school community council's parents that were involved, that school, school community council, that the revenues that the kids could benefit from far outweighed any health concern with, uh, the emission of RF radio frequency from a tower. Um, so that's why the decision was moved to, uh, to go ahead with that site. And see, the, the point is, the city could generate to receive those revenues, or the kids could receive the revenues. That's kind of the trade-off, as I, as I see it. And at the high school, as much as seven hundred dollars a month to a thousand dollars a month come in from that present, uh, location, that cell site, and that's used directly for the kids in buying, um, I'm trying to think what they're called, Chromebooks and, um.
Or candles.
And candles, except, yeah, more radiation for them. No, it's not connected to the cell tower, but it is, uh, Wi-Fi. Um, but at any rate, for technology and other, other uses there at the school where it benefits each of those kids. So don't think for a minute that the Alpine School District doesn't care about the health of our kids. We do, we as parents care about it. And I don't mean to be confrontive or combative about that, but in weighing it all out, it seems that's the case. And that it's put to good use, those, uh, cell sites, if they're going to be there, instead of the city getting wrench off of it, maybe it ought to go directly to the kids. That's my two cents, thank you.
I'm Maria Reynolds, eight sixty-four west, sixteen fifty north. Um, part of the reason that these studies are inconclusive is because the research only goes back to nineteen eighty-six. So in less than thirty years, you can't say yea or nay. And, um, federal law mandates that a cellphone is a hundred and fifty feet away from a home, a residence, because of unknown effects of radiation. Um, really, nobody's saying that, yes, this happens, we're saying it's a risk, and it's a real risk. So why, if federal law says a hundred and fifty feet away from residence, why would we put it right outside of a, a school where you're there for six hours a day, nine and a half months out of the year? So to say it is a risk, it isn't a risk, nobody has that information. But do we want to be the guinea pigs, you know? So I wanted to say to the other side of, of that comment, we don't have any information, and that is the problem. It's just too new. And that's all I had to add. Thanks.
I'd just like to defend myself, cause I felt like I didn't know, I didn't say people who are just random people on the internet who are fluky. I so, I, um, cited the World Health Organization, the FCC. And I also have from the American Cancer Society that says, in one study, they have found that those who lived in a town that could have exposed them to higher than average RF radiation from cellular phone towers in the previous five years had a slightly higher risk of cancer. Some scientists have reported that RF waves may produce other effects in human cells in lab dishes that they're testing right now, that might possibly help tumors grow. And also, uh, there were, there was a study which they had interviewed engineers that go out and test these sites. And an engineer who audited more than three thousand sites found one in ten out of compliance. And the FCC has issued just two citations in cell carriers since adopting the rules in nineteen ninety-six. Because it says, FCC says it lacks the resources to monitor each antenna. So they may say, it's only gonna admit this, who's, who's policing it? Obviously, since they've only issued two citations since adopting the rules in nineteen ninety-six, there's not a lot. So we're asking you to do some of that policing by knowing that, yes, we don't have conclusive evidence, but we do have enough to say that there's a possible risk. And in doing so, we're asking you to make ordinances that protect those who need protecting.
Anyone else?
I know this isn't a trial, and I'm not sure if this is hearsay, but my son-in-law McKay Clement worked for Addison, which is a company that brings up cellphone towers, and so he was on the tower all the time, that's what he did. And he was supposed to carry a radiation monitor because it does produce radiation. They didn't require that of him, and that's why he eventually left when they, um, became pregnant with my grandson, who's adorable. Um, it became a huge concern to have him exposed to so much radiation, so he was able to get a different job. But they definitely, absolutely do have radiation.
Anyone else?
Yes, there's a difference between.
Sorry, Neil's just going to go ahead.
There's a difference between working on a cell tower and being right there where it's radiating and being a hundred and fifty feet away, or even fifty feet away. Uh, there is a real concern when you're right there where the antenna is and it's radiating. That's why they wear protection and, and what it does is it causes retinal damage. But we're talking towers that put out thirty-five watts plus.
How many feet of it to the school?
What's that?
Five.
Five.
That's not a hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah. Uh, well, five feet to the lunchroom. Or from, from that area, it's probably in the trailer, uh, probably about thirty feet. But no, don't hear me not being concerned about the kids. Maybe that tower needs to go out, uh, out in the field there, that playing field a little more. But anyway, there's a difference from working on the tower and being right there and being fifty feet away.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll go ahead and bring it back up here for discussion, council, lots.
Well, as a, I'm talking as a citizen, right, as a parent. I, I just don't like it in schools, right? I just, I just don't think I'd just be like, but what we have before us is, is different. What we have to make our decision on, so, but that's, uh, I just think they can find other locations and, and hopefully this will help by going to Manila Park. But it, yeah. And I know, I, I've done all my research, I, before we came, I had looked and watched every city councils and what they've gone through and, and they're bound, because we don't have any hard evidence, right? And so it's hard to, to take that into factor, but then in back three lines, something's always kind of smacking upside the head saying, who knows, right? You never know, maybe, maybe fifteen years down the road, they come and say, guess what? This is what's, what's wrong now. But we, we don't know that, and we can't, we can't base our judgment on that, so. I want to give you a holy one.
So, Council, my, my inclination is to continue, because we've talked about changes to language that might be worth exploring, language that we might want to pass the school district before we rule on it here. And so my inclination is to continue this matter.
Well, and I was trying to think of some verbiage that would protect, um, I mean, how many places in, I mean, we have city property, but there's not very many city properties that, where we don't have the infrastructure to support it. So there's a lot of places, like I love the cemetery. Um, I was actually on the planning commission when we went through that the first time. And it was in a location where a cell tower wasn't going to be obtrusive either, it was by the, I mean, it was. It was just it was a smart decision. So I'm just trying to think of other city property. I mean, I just don't know how, I want to be broad enough, um, with the verbiage, but I also want to be very clarifying with it, so that, you know, can we, I don't know what, I don't know how many towers we, I mean, how many pieces of property is this going to affect? How many towers are they're going to want in my town?
Oh, that's a good question.
Some people don't know.
If I go up on the school district, right, with the schools, we, we kind of have a idea, at least in my research, in other school districts, right? We know how they're going to feel about this, right? We, we saw the letter from the, the principal. Because it brings money into their, into the schools, that can either bring more electronics or other things that can help, so.
And we can't control the school district. As to what they will allow or won't allow. But what we can do is make our ordinance such that we can control what, what they, we will allow as a city, um, within our own city properties.
Could we actually designate actual properties and say, these are the ones that are open for cell towers? I mean, could we get that specific?
It's really good.
What did you say? Can we actually designate in town, town possible sites and be just restricted to that?
Well, we actually, several years ago, before campaign, we actually created a map of just the city properties alone that we would, um, encourage cell towers to locate on when they came and asked for a place. Um, the problem is, is that they work on their service areas, right? And so they come and are saying, we need a cell tower within this area to service our customers. That area isn't always gonna jive with our map of, please put your cell tower here on the city property. I mean, but we have done that and we can certainly resurrect that map and say, you know, here are the locations that we would encourage a cell tower provider to look at first before they, uh, look outside in the community. I mean, certainly.
And with the bike plant and other properties that we have, we have several throughout the city. So we can give them some kind of distribution, uh, filter where they can put, where they can put a tower.
My, my concern is unless we completely restrict it to just these properties and not say, we encourage you to go to these ones first, they're saying, yeah, we looked at that, but that doesn't work for us. And so they're gonna come back with what they want anyway. So I think it, it's either you restrict it to these specific properties or, as we have now, it is restricted to public properties, which means city-owned properties, parks, schools, those, those kind of properties. And with that, we do have spread in the community with parks and, and schools. Um, you do have some spread throughout the community, you take schools out of there, then you're limiting a lot of areas.
But it would still be a, a conditional use permit, they would still have to.
Oh, yeah, it's, it is a conditional use, either way, it is currently a conditional use.
So are we creating a kind of war between us and the school district by having them stated in our ordinance?
Oh, you're very nice.
Well, I think the language does not specifically address the school.
Well, we can't say what they call that property, right?
Yeah, I just said public property, and what we're doing is, we're not restricting, a, a cell tower can still come in on private property and ask for a, a conditional use permit to be on private property. That's not the change we're making. The change we're making is to reduce the thousand foot distance requirement anywhere in the city to a hundred and fifty feet on public property. Public property includes anything owned by the school district, the city, the county, the state.
Cause I know we have cell towers on private property, is what you're saying.
We do have some, yes.
There's not, there's one, no, not a silo, there ain't. So, but it's private property, so you have no.
But we've had instances in the past where people wanted to locate on public property, the city turned them down, they just went right across the property line to the private property owner. It's the same effect, but now the city doesn't get the revenue.
Right.
And so there's, and I understand this isn't all about money, per se. But if there's, we just have to understand that if the city restricts and says, um, this is part of public property, they can always locate on it. Now, they saw community requirements, can't go on somebody's house. But, you know, there's, they can't go on private property and, and in essence, it's the same effect without the school or the city benefiting from, the same impact, but not receiving revenue.
Any other discussion, Alex?
I, I just wanted to, uh, Ben made this suggestion that we go back and see what verbiage can be added. And I'm, I'm scratching my head now, because I thought we reviewed that term and felt like that was restrictive enough that there was no need for additional verbiage. And so I'm not sure, you know, with that direction, I'm not sure what we're gonna do with it.
I don't think, I think.
With supporting infrastructure, I think that narrows, that kind of satisfies that for me.
Neil, I got a question, sorry. What's the radius, um, what's the radius on this cell tower, how far do they each have?
You mean the radiation?
No, whenever it just covers the rain, covers.
But Sprint does not have one in town. Whatever the distance is, Sprint doesn't have it.
Don't they have the one in the middle?
They weren't.
Depends on how high it is.
Yeah.
And then the one each puts out, but basically, it's about five miles.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call, okay, Ben, do you have a comment?
Well, so I love the aspect of this ordinance proposal that adds to, to force the co-location or, or give us a little more leverage when we negotiate co-location. Uh, I, I hear the public saying, and I agree a hundred and ten percent, we ought to get our cell towers where they make the most sense. If it were my world totally, we wouldn't put them on elementary schools probably, but we would put them in high schools where it makes a lot of sense and they're keeping us away from putting them out in direct center. Um, and so there, there's gotta be some avenue there to achieve the best location possible. But I also hear, and I think it's a very valid and important point, that we don't want to always turn everything into a one-off, let's go before potential, conditional use permitting process and see if we can figure it out each time, because we're gonna end up creating more of these nightmare situations where there's this agreement and there's differing views over what is the best location. So I think it needs to be tightened up, I think it needs to be improved. I think there's some proposals that I've heard tonight that are good language, but I'm not comfortable making this change in its entirety, it's written.
Can you get specifics, because if they go back, can you get, learn any specific information on how to change the ordinance?
At this point, I don't know what to do with it.
Yeah, and so the discussion we've had, and, and there was this proposal that you made kind of off record about perhaps saying municipally owned rather than publicly owned, so that it just impacted the city, it didn't impact the school district. Um, and the discussion I heard indicated whether, and so that, that's a change that might be good, but, but Scott had indicated, if I heard correctly, that, that that might be valuable to go back to the school district with and discuss.
All I'm saying is, we have people here tonight saying, we don't want them on school property. I'm assuming there's people out there that say absolutely, we're okay with them on school property and revenue.
We, we've heard that.
And so if, if we're gonna restrict the school district in that manner, then let's, let's have that discussion. My preference is, we adopt what we have and those residents that don't want this on school district property, take that to Alpine School District and say, maybe your policy not to have these on school property. That, that to me makes more sense than the city restricting the school. Let the school make that decision to restrict themselves. I think we'd be frustrated if they created a policy that's gonna restrict us when we should have that decision on what we want to do. That's kind of how I see it. I think Alpine School District needs to be able to tell their people, we're okay with these and we, we like it for the revenue and we don't see health concerns. Or, you're right, there are issues here, let's, let's not have them on school property.
I think, could I just clarify, I hope, for you, Ben? The, the language that says reduce the required separation from a thousand feet to one hundred feet to feet on public property with supporting infrastructure, I think addresses the concern that somehow there's going to be more cell towers out at Manila Elementary. Because the only way they can put another cell tower out there is if they already have supporting infrastructure, like light poles or something else there. It, it can't be a cell tower farm, because there's still required a thousand feet distance requirement in any other circumstance, unless there's something already there. distance requirement in any other circumstance unless there's something already there like a light pole or a, another existing cell tower that they can co-locate. Does that make sense?
And I know, and I, and I like that aspect of it.
Those are, who is this representative for the school board?
Well, uh, Oliver. Brandon Halliday. But it would, would it, would it be going to the representative or just Rob Smith of the school district?
What do you think?
Whoever, I mean, Rob, staff. Uh, Mr. Halliday's the, the school board member. I mean, that, how, the process of working it throughout Alpine School District is probably similar to.
It'd be nice to have him on your side.
You can talk to staff, but I'm assuming that if there's going to be a policy decision on that, it is going to be the school board.
All right, there's, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance twenty fifteen down to twenty seven. I'm reading the Pleasant Grove City Code, section ten dash fifteen dash thirty-six, that, dash D. Commercial communications applicable citywide, reducing the required thousand-foot distance between cell towers.
Motion by Diana.
Second.
Second by Cindy, by voice. Diana?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Ben?
Sure.
Sid, yes. I think we have it on the night, there. Okay, the motion has passed and. That was like a hit from my head. The, the, the motion has passed on Vanessa.
Ben, there's gavel, there's a gavel.
Well, I think, I think the, the reason it sounds like dramatic is because you shut the gate after the count got out. Whatever that term is.
I know how to.
Basically, so, and that's why in some terms.
So it's the.
Is that what you say, Robinson? Do you know what those terms are?
So. And besides, I'm just.
Got your hat on, buddy.
So, okay, I'll take the way it's been.
You want this, everyone off, yes. City, I don't find none of them. That's what it comes down to right there. And so many words.
And what the public wants.
Well, yes.
Really. Yeah, they want their cell phones, so less the towers. Or just.
You've got to have it anyway.
So, a takeaway I, I have from this is that we need better communication between the boards in our city and the commissions, between the city council and board of adjustment and planning commission. That we need to do a better job being proactive and communicating with them when, when issues come up. And sometimes we can't foresee how large an issue will, will get, but that's our job to hopefully try and, try and redo that and work with those commissions and boards and, and be in communication so we're all on the same page with what's happening with that. And the other is, is again, trying, trying to notice out to the, the citizens and, and make, and make them aware of these, of these big issues going on. And then the CUP, I, I think about some issues as well as, as we're dealing out with our current boards and commissions that have CUPs come before them and making sure that, again, we're on the same page. And at the end of the day, they, they are the type of body that can make that decision. But there have been some issues in the, in recent months that have come up that we need to make sure that we're, we're addressing, that they have the proper training and the proper, um, you know, communication and, and what they need to make those, those decisions so we're not cutting ourselves out of that. And a decision where something can only be appealed or the decision is final and there's been possibly some errors made. So that's at least what I've taken away and hopefully, um, we've worked with, with staff on that and our other boards and commissions. So we appreciate you bringing that to our attention and, and we'll work on those issues because they do affect people's everyday lives and it's, it's very serious and, and they, I know they try their best. These are planning commission board of adjustment, um, but we can always offer more training and, and communicate that with them to make sure they're making the, the best decision from the purposes of citizens, so. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to. Action item ten A. Because B and C has been continued.
Would you like to make a motion on those?
Yes, I would, I'd like to tie up the loose sentence.
Yeah.
It's a hazard on there, but I'd rather have a motion.
Let me do that. So, Council, I move that we, uh, continue a public hearing for consideration of adoption of ordinance twenty fifteen dash twenty eight, amended Pleasant Grove City Code, section ten, dash nine A, dash eight, dash E, yard apartments in rural residential zone, reducing the required side yard setback for accessory structures to free feed. That, that action be continued to July twenty eighth.
And also, Ben. Motion for Ben, second by Diana, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then I'll move that we continue a public hearing to consider adoption of ordinance twenty fifteen dash twenty three, rezone one acre of land from Grove Zone to commercial sub, sales sub-district to the Grove Zone mixed housing sub-district on property located approximately one hundred south, thirteen hundred west in the Grove Zone commercial sales sub-district, also continued to July twenty eighth.
And also, Ben. Make a motion by Ben, second by Diana, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, action item ten A. This is being presented by Ken.
Okay, so we have a final plat for Majestic Meadows. They are the development where the, um, Culinary Craft Building is located and there's a dentist and, and doctor's office out front. They're wanting to expand their development further, so, uh, in keeping with their original plan to have separate lots. Excuse me.
Like they want to build a tower?
What? Sorry. So this is in the CG zone and I just realized that my pen light here is dying. It's hard to have any light on it, so. So this is State Street, um, and it's just at the bend. So you've got Macy's over in this corner and you've got, um, the Main Street Geneva Road, uh, over here. So, uh, two twenty south goes right underneath it, you've got the rodeo grounds right across the street here. Well, this is just the zone map, so let me move forward here. You've got State Street and two twenty south right here. Then you've got a couple of existing buildings which are not a part of this development. Uh, you've got an existing, uh, office building in this location and Culinary Craft would be up right into here. So it is in this area that they're wanting to further subdivide the property, uh, as shown here. So they're creating lots four, five, and six. So you've got one, two, and three. So they've got quite an odd shaped lot here. Uh, that is because this part here is, um, storm drainage area. Uh, it's already been set up to be that adjacent to, uh, storm drainage property next door. No, I'm sorry, no, that's, uh, you've got the storage units right there, but this is already prepared to be storm drainage. So, uh, really the developable area of this lot is right here. Then, uh, another building, uh, in this area and another one there. So, uh, just further development, this, uh, would be the, the last phase of the development of this Majestic Meadows. So this has been, uh, at preliminary level to the planning commission and was approved and staff recommends approval of this final plat.
What are they anticipating on that lot, six?
Uh, it's, it's speculative at this point, but, uh, on this uh, lot right here, it's most likely going to be an office building and an office building there. This could be more of the, um, expandable type, uh, either commercial or office or, uh, a commercial warehouse type of a situation.
This is not a public hearing, so we'll bring it up for discussion. Any comments from the council?
Sorry.
I don't have any questions. You have, no motion?
So where is the zoning right there? Is it all office?
It's CG, commercial, general commercial, which is our most broad commercial zone. It allows permits just about everything that's in the commercial category.
Have you told them we want a mixed house?
They know.
It's Chris.
They actually own this property here, but, um, it's not a part of their development here. But, uh, we've told them, you know, best use of that corner is a restaurant.
Okay, what, her motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve a final plat for three lot subdivision called Majestic Meadows, commercial subdivision plat C on property located at two hundred twenty south State Street, CG general commercial zone.
I'll second it. Motion by Ben, second by Diana, all in favor?
Aye.
Or any of the applicants?
Reed Swenson was concerned that he might not be able to make it. I told him I wasn't aware of any big concerns, but of course he understands that if you wanted to continue it, you could, but. Oh, I'm sorry.
I now know a lot about cell towers. I'll try to forget, but thank you.
Okay, item ten B, to consider the approval request of Joshua with third town development for sixty-eight mixed housing development. Can I go?
Ken again. Okay, so recently the, uh, council approved the site plan for the Garden Grove, um, mixed housing development. And, uh, so that's located on thirteen hundred west and approximately one hundred north. It is in the mixed housing sub-district of the Grove Zone. Uh, adjacent property here is in the commercial sales sub-district. So currently the, there are two homes on the property. The Robinson and Bean family, uh, own these properties and are under contract to have this, uh, developed or sold and developed by, uh, the developers of the Garden Grove proposal. And, uh, this is the northern half of the site plan that you saw previously. And I'm sorry, I forgot to add the site plan, uh, slide on here to show that to you. But if you'll recall, uh, this would be the northern half. So you've got thirteen hundred west or Proctor Lane right here. You've got a row of, uh, live-work units, so they have commercial on the bottom floor that face onto thirteen hundred west. And then, uh, you've got single-family homes on small lots on the north end and then through the middle. Then there would be more down and through here, single-family homes. And then, uh, on the back end, you've got the townhomes. Uh, so this is a portion, this is actually phase one of the development. So this item is twofold. It has the plat, plat A, which is only phase one. And then, uh, the second portion of the item would be the phasing plan, which is just this. So it says future phase two right here. So this would show the entire development in through here. So plat, plat A is just this area, which would be their first phase. So, uh, the entire plat, a preliminary plat included the entire development. Uh, and so that was approved, uh, by planning commission and, uh, the developers have chosen at this time to only go forward with plat A and will come forward at a future time with plat B. So, uh, we recommend approval.
Is this the thirty-nine?
Thirty-nine units, yes. So you've got, uh, five live-work units right here. You've got, uh, looks like nine of the townhomes in the rear. And then the, the bulk of the rest is, is a small lot, single-family homes.
Just bring it back up here to the council, any discussion, questions, comments, concerns? Nope.
Yes, the applicant is here, John Destor, if you'd like to talk.
It's just working it out with their engineering department as far as the, the last things that need to be done and get the plat recorded and the water pond and stuff like that. So, as fast as we can. Really, we want to get going now, so the, the year, the year is going by, uh, the month. Thank you, guys. Thanks for your consideration.
I don't think we have any questions. Thank you, Ben, so very, very good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I look for a motion?
Mayor, and we, the city council approved the total thirty-nine lot, final subdivision called Garden Grove Plat. A located approximately fifteen south, thirteen hundred west, Grove Mixed Housing Sub-District and adopting exhibits, conditions, and findings of this.
A motion by Eric.
I'll second.
Second by Ben, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, are we okay that it's seven sixty-eight lot?
But I went upwards in our.
So, I don't.
What do you mean?
On the agenda, it says sixty-eight lot, mixed housing, but we're only approving thirty-nine.
But they're phasing, I don't, I don't know, they can't read that.
No, I did hear that, phasing, but I'm.
It's the final plat and phasing plat and the phasing plat.
So let me just, we say sixty-eight?
I just want to make sure.
You said sixty-eight at the end.
No, I said. And, and phasing plan.
Seconded with the phasing plan.
Second. Motion by Ben.
We just want to make sure everything.
Yeah, thanks for being here. Everything's dotted. Okay, um, agenda item ten C, uh, to consider adoption resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a lease purchase agreement with Science First National Bank for the purpose of acquiring six public safety vehicles.
So we have a, a lease. We're, we're almost. We have two items left.
Scott, every time you say that, it goes in that hour.
Do it, no.
I just went to the bathroom, so I'm okay. Uh, we have a lease program with our police vehicles where every three years we switch out a third of our fleet. Um, we have a negotiated buyback price with our vehicles that we're switching out. And through that lease program, we, we sell them back for a certain rate and then we get six new vehicles. So this lease agreement is with Science Bank, they're the ones who finance, uh, the money upfront and then we pay the, paid out over three years. So we've been doing this, I want to say, for three or four years now with our police vehicles. This is the necessary step in order for us to keep that program going.
Discussion, questions for Scott?
I've got one question for Scott, you know. Having read through the lease agreement, there are a couple of representations that we make that just aren't factually accurate. I don't know if it matters, they're standard language, but there are things in there that say, like, we're af- after, after having heard the preceding week's minutes, the council voted on this resolution. And so there are a few things in there that are in the language here that I noticed aren't our traditional procedure here. I don't know if that matters, if we want to strike the language that is accurate.
You can strike that.
So that would be my recommendation.
Standard things that come from the standard contract.
Yeah, yeah, it's politically, but it's something that I just thought, given that it's not actually true.
Yeah, if you want to email that to us, Ben will strike if, just in the, in the motion to say to strike the uh, things that Ben sends us, we'll do that. Assuming. It doesn't change the fundamental agreement that we have.
Okay, and this information. I don't know, I can't, we've done a great job with that program. Okay, any other questions or concerns?
No, let's hurry.
I like her.
Looking for a motion?
Uh, I'll make the motion that we adopt resolution twenty fifteen dash zero two six, authorizing the mayor to sign a lease purchase agreement with Science First National Bank, Salt Lake City U.P. For the purpose of acquiring six public safety vehicles and providing for an effective date and, uh, reviewing an email from Ben.
Well, I can give you the specific. It's page eighteen of the agreement, page fifty-five of our packet where it says, after the review of the preceding minutes read and approved, which I just don't think actually happens in the way that we do things.
After and taking into consideration that sentence.
Perfect.
Second.
Okay, motion by Diana, second by Eric, by voice. Diana?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Sid, yes. Ben?
Yes.
Okay, uh, motion passed. All right, we're now on to. Item ten D, copies by present. Uh, this is for to consider the permanent poll workers, touchscreen technicians, and precinct managers for August eleventh municipal primary election.
And the state code requires, um, state code forty-eight five six oh two, that municipal election just come out. Play on my head. Body, um, appoint poll workers at least fifteen days before the state level of election. County council, all of those. Poll workers, they're all registered voters in the county. Some of the names may not recognize because forum, city, it's going all by mail, so we.
That's the only way to vote?
Well, they all have like a. They'll have a station, I guess, election day, really. But so, um, we relax the poll workers. And I mean, since it's county-run, they, we have to get the poll workers to be trained.
Okay. All right, we're just still progressing. And this is new this year, our electronic voting. And this can be a new procedure that we do, you know, now, hopefully, and if it goes now.
Do or by mail in two years, but let's not go back there.
Okay, we will. We're just inching closer and closer, Kathy, and making your job easier. Okay, so any other questions for Kathy?
Yeah, I've got one. So in, two years ago, we had just two polling locations, right? But this opens that up again.
Yes, because the county is basically during the, they're not really running the election, but. They're, we're just using their. Their.
They're recommended.
But I ask, um, Scott, hold on, and this. But I ask, um, after county is probably actually a little bit too, look at, well, he's a gentleman, and a credible justice, how is he old?
So they want to do, so this is a county request to have this many polling in these specific locations, or?
And is there, is there any kind of difference with the county counting or anything with giving the results back or things like that?
It should be quicker, I know, but they are doing contract more cities this year, so it'll be like it was last year when it did.
But they have to take the cars down to the county, don't they?
Yeah.
So there's a little bit more travel time for the poll workers, that's what county should be quicker because it's
Okay, and this is, we have our, on the website, the locations happen for a while, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Wait, read, is there a motion?
That be appoint poll workers, touchscreen technicians, and precinct managers for the August 11th, 2015 municipal primary election as proposed and discussed.
Motion by Ben?
Second.
Second by Diana, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We've moved discussion 10A to next week. We're now on to neighborhood, oh, let's see, discussion item for July 28th, council meeting.
Can I, we have an item on there, it's going to take a few minutes, so we probably have to take a break.
Scott, I told you, I said don't jinx it and
You were right.
We're going to go ahead and motion for about a break.
Very nice.
Would you like to talk to us now just during this fire break, or would you like to have us be here for the use of? We can make the motion to reopen the session. We take a motion to the council or the mayor for ten has discretion, so we open the session, so so I'll make the motion, not really happy to hear what you have to say about fireworks. After the fire break, so in about five minutes, we'll, we'll let it tell us what's on the line. Yeah, it was a crowd. Yeah, I ain't married. No, there were some awards to the police department, so they're allowed.
When they came home to the zoo, yeah, his brother's wife, he didn't share it. He didn't share.
What's available over there?
Yeah, we were high tea, and then we got home, and we got out of the can, it was six. Dang it, I'm trying to change it. I was thinking it smelled too much.
Too many on the list.
19.4 million, 12.4 million?
No, yeah, the search, the first facility was 19 million, the first bond effort, it was not like 16 or 17 million. And then the second bond effort was 12.6 million, but there was a hundred dollars in the bond here, so it was a little tricky to keep the bond. So it's, it's happening. It was 12.6, it shows up because of the way you, the premium bonding is a subtle thing in the way that, you know, it works, but you would have actually paid back. 13.6 million. Who we listed on the ballot is 12.6, because we have flexibility over how we CEO, the time that I've been in office, we've seen an increase in I think that's great. I'm getting to Vegas, though.
I talked to him twice. Mostly so that it's different, all my pictures. There, the mark, but, um, they were funny. But I was signed, they have to be together, but it's a big side, so but if you try to put them on opposite sides, it'll all like turn out, so they have to be like on the next to each other. But not the same.
They are really gay, well. And they've got all facilities for all channels, all entertainment.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and let's redo the agenda for next week, Scott? We've got 10 minutes.
If we have a, well, we have an item here that's good.
Don't care, so.
If we have something that we want to
Yeah, we do. Hi. Do you want to come on up, we're gonna, he, he said he got here at 6:30. It was packed, and he had an, an item for the open sessions. If you want to come on up, pick a podium and give us your name and address and let us know your concern, that would be great.
Kind of forgot my name, but I guess my name's Fred.
Okay, Fred.
I've lived in Pleasant Grove all my life. Anyways, I had five items, but I'm, I only want to address one really important one tonight.
Okay.
The one that I think we need to be concerned about is how many of you people looked around and seen all the dry grass fields right around in town even? And we're allowing fireworks to be set off on the 24th of July. I'm thinking is we need to reconsider and maybe have a you know, I hate to say it, but I don't want some field burned down and then catch on fire a place where a little kid or somebody's living and they can't get out. And you know, one of the I can cite a couple of big ones right now. One's only about what, half a block right here back of your log cabin. It could burn down, I mean, one sparking that burned down in 20 seconds or a minute. And I'm, you know, then fireworks they allow now were different than they allowed five years ago. Now they go up twice as high and and they're all over the place. Before they used to be kind of in the parks and that, but now every person on the block's got them to I don't know whether the fire department can justify a temporary ban of fireworks.
Let's go ahead and ask Chief Thomas. Chief, is that a state regulation on the fireworks? How does that work and do you feel confident that if there were an accident?
It is stay regulated.
Okay.
We do have some restrictions in place up along the foothills. There are distances and maps that are in place and are on the website for review. So those restrictions are in place. As far as fields that are in and about town, then we're prepared to fight fires there. We haven't had any yet, we've had a couple real small ones. We haven't had any significant fires in any fields within the city limits.
So we've been very, very lucky, I think.
Well.
I, on the 4th of July, I had, we call them rockets, bottle rockets?
Aerials.
Bottle rockets on my lawn and on my roof. And you know, they're all over the sea. So you know, maybe there isn't, people set off fireworks over here, but I don't know, I'm really concerned. Maybe I'm over concerned, but I've never seen it this dry for a long time in Pleasant Grove. The last time I seen it this dry, when the whole mahogany burned up, if you can remember that. It burned up on, I think, the 24th of July because people setting off illegal above the canal. Now, is above the canal illegal?
That's right, yeah.
So people above the canal are safe. People below the safe are in trouble, they've got to watch their homes.
There's a line we call the urban rural interchange interface.
Yeah, it's called the urban rural interface. And in, in the past, we have enacted ordinances that would restrict the fireworks above the canal. Two years ago, we did, and we put out maps. This year, there was no recommendation to be stricter than what we already are. And so there is 150 foot buffer zone between the foothills and where the residential areas start, that there's not allowed to be any fireworks at all. But we didn't restrict it down in town as much as we have in the past.
Yeah, so it's not just above the canal, it's, it's queen to the firebreak road.
Yeah, it's up there ways.
Anyways, you got, you got businesses down here that could go up any minute. Come right down across the road from, oh, I'm trying to think of the name anyway. It's the Post Office Road coming up. There's Russian thistle, this tall, 20, 30 feet path of them. The only way they'd be safe is they're in a steel building. If a firework went off there, I can tell you this, to me, it's pretty explosive this year, but you know, I'm only one person and I wish you guys could at least maybe post on the thing that don't be setting them off by dry fields.
That's definitely something we can do. We can put a notice maybe on a slider on our homepage, Scott? That just is a reminder about fireworks and how it's been, would that be possible?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll get a slider on our website.
Okay, that, that would help because, you know, young, young kids don't realize how fast and things can catch fire.
Absolutely, well, thank you for coming and sharing your thoughts because that is an important, important issue. Our fire department is ready and prepared and we put some regulations in place with noise, do more noise things, so we appreciate that.
But they don't need to practice if somebody gets killed or nothing, you know?
Okay, they're going to get there in time.
No, I mean, the fire guy might even get killed, burned out, burned. Anyway, thanks.
Only reminder.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and Scott, you want to review the agenda with us?
Yeah, so we have we have Judge Pollock, who has requested to come and meet with the council regarding our prosecutor, our prosecutor position. Right now, we have a part-time position funded, it's been that way for a long time. Because it is a part-time position and it's a position that we have, a general assembly has a law agree that does this. We, it tends to be a little bit of a revolving door, we're just, we're asking for highly skilled people to work part-time. So he, he would like to address the council on kind of his thoughts and having the city consider that and so he'll, he'll present his case and then we can discuss how we want to proceed. 9A is a, is public hearing on our storm rain impact fee, items that we went over a few weeks ago. Matt Willis from Science Bank will be here, Dean will be here to help direct that discussion and make sure they understand what's going on. I don't, I can't speak to it tonight to give you any sort of expertise on that, but those two
Is that the discussion, Scott, where we'll talk about a 10-year, 25-year, or is that a different discussion?
So the 10-year, 25-year storm is a different discussion on us changing our master plan. This, now, if, if we decide to change our master plan, then we could go back and do a quick update of our storm rain impact fee at that time. But at this point, we've been working on this for a couple of years now. And so we're to a point where we're going to convert action from the council to Ken, do you want to cover 9B on the
Okay, this item came forward to planning commission at their last meeting and it was actually continued on to their upcoming meeting on Thursday night because there was concern that because there was concern that uh the request wasn't addressing everything that the planning commission wanted to address. Uh, so this will be coming forward to you with their recommendations of uh further uh changes based on some of the staff proposals. Now, some of that was egged on by our recent Sterling Boran situation. If you're familiar with the shed that was approved uh by conditional use permit and is now uh being challenged at the next uh board of adjustment meeting by an appeal by and by a neighbor. But with that going on, staff decided to look at accessory structures, ordinances that we have in both our residential R-one zones and the rural residential uh zone. At the same time, this separate applicant came forward for something that he wanted to do on his RR zone property, which would be to reduce the setback requirement. We looked at the the zoning uh differences be uh for accessory structures between the RR zone and the R-one zone. We had a discussion about, is there a true difference? Or should there be a true difference between how we regulate accessory apartments, excuse me, accessory structures in RR zone versus in R-one zone if they're not dealing with animals? Uh, as we've looked at how the RR zone has developed over the last decade or so, it has not developed as we had originally envisioned a long ago where it would be small farms and everybody would have a horse and you'd have this large field in the backyard or whatever. You don't have those anymore. I mean, there are some in existence. There's some in existence that were there many years ago, but as far as any new ones, there's hardly any. There might be a handful. Mostly what's happening in the RR zone are large estate homes that have big homes that take up more space. And by the time uh you compare that with a smaller home on a smaller lot, the impact is the same. So uh as far as adding a uh accessory structure in the rear yard of a RR zone with a large home and a large uh yard and everything, we we felt like there wasn't really enough difference between the RR zone and how it's developing and the R-one zone. So we're looking at the accessory structure requirements for all of those zones, uh even though this particular request came up separately uh from uh an individual who would like to see the setbacks reduced uh for for what he wants to do. But we told him what else was going on and so he was, at that point, uh felt courage to make application for something that would affect the entire RR zone. So in essence, what we are doing now is we are uh making some recommendations that would uh reduce the RR zone setback in some instances for accessory structures to match that of the R-one zone requirements. We're looking at making some other changes that would affect all of those zones. Some of those, I'll just read through what we have here. It would make requirements similar to the R-one zones except for animal structures. Setbacks graduate depending on height, starting at a three-foot minimum setback for a twelve-foot height structure. And then for every one-foot additional height, there's a one-foot additional setback. Size uh being restricted to twelve percent of the minimum lot size for that zone. So currently, we have in a provision in the code that says uh it can't be more than ten percent. But you can go to the planning commission and get a a waiver of that for conditional use permit. And we've had over the years since I've been here, uh quite a few of those that have come forward and and have been approved. And there's no cap on how big that can be through the conditional use permit. We felt like that has become a problem. There are a few of them that are presenting problems because there is no cap that we ought to uh look at. Uh, and and we've got some modeling that we will show you next week that will show how this size of a building looks and this size of a yard with this kind of a setback. Uh, so we're we're with that type of uh research. We're proposing something that we feel is a reasonable-sized structure for a residential area because there are some structures that just get too big. They don't belong in a residential neighborhood. Somebody wants a fifty-by-fifty-foot warehouse building, they should build that in an industrial zone, not in their backyard.
Twelve percent.
So it 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 depends on, uh, well, so again, what we did is we we've kind of played out the numbers and drew it out. So currently, the the ten percent limitation, but that can be exceeded by conditional use permit, um allows in an R-one-eight zone, which is a lot of the areas through here are R-one-eight, R-one-nine, R-one-ten. R-one-eight would allow an eight-hundred-square-foot building, which forty feet by twenty feet is a eight-hundred-square-foot building in a in a R-one-eight zone. So if you go to R-one-nine, then it allows a nine-hundred-square-foot building. You go to R-one-ten, it allows for a thousand-square-foot building. So it goes up depending on the minimum lot size in that zone. So when we looked at an RR, which allows a half an acre, which is almost twenty-two thousand square feet, then ten percent is twenty-two hundred square feet. That's a big building for an accessory structure. So um we we felt like, uh, and there have been instances where we've had larger-than-that approved. So we felt like there's need to uh limit this. So we'll we'll talk more about that. We'll get into more detail on how we came up with that. Heights from eighteen feet to twenty-five feet, which need to be approved by conditional use permit.
So they're twelve, they're twelve-foot height.
As long as they're meeting a setback, then that can be approved by staff if it reaches eighteen feet. Now currently, go ahead, Eric. Okay, so currently, we do have a requirement, if it exceeds eighteen feet, then we have a requirement to notice the neighbors within a hundred feet of that proposed location to see if there's any um any opposition to that. And then if there is any opposition logged with us, then we will schedule a conditional use permit. Well, in almost every instance that that occurs, there's somebody who has a problem with it. So we just felt like that's an extra step we just need to eliminate. We just automatically, if it's exceeding eighteen feet, it's conditional use permit. We don't have to go out there and see if possibly somebody objects. We'll just go ahead and schedule a conditional use permit. I'm sorry. Yes, so and and another thing is that it cannot exceed the height of the home.
Are we still putting up those signs on the property?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so another thing with RR zones is we, a lot of these things are not currently in the RR zone, but they're in the R-one zone. So we're just taking all that, putting it in the RR zone as well. So we haven't had design requirements on uh RR zone buildings. But we're saying anything that exceeds five hundred square feet needs to have some color matching and materials matching of at least thirty percent of the of all sides of the structure. So that it fits in as a residential structure. And this, this would not apply to animal structures. Uh, then animal structures have a separate uh setback requirement. They have to have a twenty-foot rear uh rear yard setback, seventy-five feet minimum from a neighboring home and fifty feet from the home of that property. And then we're taking out the waiver ability to uh for any of these requirements. It just is, you can't go and seek a waiver for these requirements. And I think that 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 waiver has been a headache for us and that's been the cause of some of our hearings that are still causing problems.
And touching.
Yeah. So anyway, uh, we will get into more detail on this uh ordinance next week.
Thanks, Ken.
So there's the John Hart research request.
Just, Ken, go ahead.
Yeah. So this has uh come before, uh, you before, and we just had some miscommunication with the applicant. And so he has agreed that the twenty-eighth is a good time, next week is a good time for him to come. So his request, uh, that is to take approximately one acre and uh rezone it to uh mixed housing. So his location, and we did talk about this a little bit at a previous meeting. Uh, you got Proctor Lane thirteen hundred west right here. And the uh tonight's approval of the plat- and phasing plan for the Garden Grove up at that location. So the new road would come right through this point and bisect his property and leave this little piece here, which he felt rendered it uh not very useful as a commercial property. And so he wanted to have that piece of property uh rezone to mixed housing.
Scott, the ordinance and then the compensation schedule, we've discussed this in previous meetings, so this is just to follow up with more information that are requested.
Yes, so we wanna go over that with you tonight, so that if you have anything you wanna change for next week, we can take that direction.
All right.
So I've asked David, uh, who's done most of the research on this, I'll let him explain. Uh, one thing we uh didn't go in depth on two weeks ago was the methodology on how we came up with these ranges. So, and we received some feedback from the council at the time. So David's gonna go into a little more detail on the methodology behind the ranges and then show some of the information.
Because if we don't see it happen, we don't think it did.
I understand that. So I wanna show you a couple of different kind of summary slides and then maybe one more piece of information. Um, it's in your packet in the drop box. And uh if you have questions, we can go from there. You can see up here, we've got um kind of the summary slide of the different positions that we're talking about. The previous range from the two thousand nine um ordinance that we talked about, the new proposed range, and you asked for that percent change. And that's based off of the minimum to minimum.
So the previous range was the two thousand nine?
Two thousand nine, yes. Um, the three that don't have the previous range weren't included in that ordinance. Um, we of course didn't have uh the engineer as a department head level at that point. Um, and the library was under the parking rec at that point as well.
Chief building official.
And uh.
Well, it's a statutory position that we should have a range for with the Johnsons.
Dave Houston.
Dave Houston.
Dave Houston.
Mm-hmm. And then.
So there's, sorry, go back.
But.
There's uh the percent change from two thousand nine to the proposed range. You see it ranges nineteen percent, fifteen percent, twenty-one percent. So if we annualize that over the six years, it's roughly three percent a year the range would have increased if we would have done this year. So this.
So is that somewhere on these charts?
No, that's just an explanation of what that number is, if we wanna.
I think that would be really crucial to have, that if we had done these on a yearly basis versus waiting this many years, six years, to make it, I think that, for me, I would like to see that number on there.
Okay.
Had we done this on a yearly basis, it would be a three percent, which is basically um a pretty average uh cola or merit raise.
That's right, so we could create another column that we can show the annualized.
I don't know about anybody else, but I know what the questions that are coming up, that we're jumping from here to there. But, okay, well, it is nineteen percent, but if if we'd done it on a yearly basis, it's just like the utilities. You know, if we'd done it on a yearly basis instead of waiting like uh has happened in the past, then I think that's really crucial to know that that's a three percent increase per year.
Yeah, it might be helpful to cities, boy, to have kind of parentheticals, previous range from this year, you know, in parentheses and proposed range for.
The previous range.
Because they're gonna see that percent change. People are gonna see that percent change and go, oh my gosh, they've gotten a nineteen percent. You know what I'm saying?
Well, it it and maybe we'll just eliminate that column and just have the annualized.
I would do three percent a year.
Well, yeah, so we wanna, I mean, to your point, we wanna illustrate the year-over-year as opposed to the.
Big long.
And actually, we could have both of those, that's not a problem. I mean, I I think we just wanna make sure uh everybody understands the flow of how the numbers work because for the ones that are thirteen percent and six percent, those are gonna be less than a three percent annualized. So each one will be slightly different and we'll have to figure that out.
I wanna make sure, this doesn't mean that everyone's getting this rate, it's just the ranges that if we were to get raised that are comparable to neighboring communities.
Yeah, so the the whole purpose of what we're doing is, we're required by state law that if ranges are gonna change, the city council has to approve them for appointed officials. So that's myself, the department heads, and a couple other statutory positions. So we adopt the ranges and that's what's in front of the council is the range. And then what the the individual is paid within that range. And so they they we, they can't be paid in excess of what the maximum range is and technically they shouldn't be under what the minimum is. And so there's, uh, that that's, all we're doing is talking the ranges. The actual salaries for individuals aren't gonna change, with the exception of a couple employees who probably don't meet the minimum. And then we're gonna have to discuss those and figure out. And ideally, we would uh change that, I would hope, pretty soon. But I don't know if that causes concern with the public that we're changing salaries because of the ranges. But if we would have updated our ranges all along, it would, those salaries should have been in line all along. And we just, we haven't done this in six years and from here on out, we gotta do it every year. I mean, this is, this is a function of us just not doing something we should be doing every year.
So to the methodology, um, it's based on a market study of the eleven comparable cities that we've determined as our benchmark cities. Um, and we've taken uh the actual salary of those positions based on reports from a uh database that we're involved in called TechNet is the company uh com- compensation survey that they do. And uh we took the actual salary of those that reported the position. Some of the cities don't have that position or contract out or various, you know, things that make it not completely apples-to-apples. But based on that uh actual um average, we've put the midpoint um based on that average so that the average really does fall right within the middle. And then you determine the range surrounding that. And that's what we've done formulaically to to make that happen. We've asked some other cities uh within the benchmark, which you asked us to do to determine their methodology. Um, their methodology turned out to be the exact same as ours. Um, Lehigh does the market survey. They actually have the company TechNet do the market survey for them and do that market study. They take the average and then um they put the range between forty and forty-five percent of the mid. Ours is uh was determined at forty-five percent here. Um, the other cities that I talked to, there was a couple others. They both said that they did market surveys um and then created the range surrounding the actual average, which we came up on our own and it's nice to know that they were following the same methodology that we did. Uh, let's go to the next. This is uh some information about the different benchmark cities. The blue are the cities that are in our benchmark that we used um previously. The gray are cities um that we wanted to add for comparison's sake.
For income.
And the two, the two points of data on here is the population, which is the bar graph, and then their general revenue number is that gray line, um, which shows up green for cash and uh different versions. But here we got the, those two different data points. Um, and then Pleasant Grove, I put us in there twice so that you can see us within our benchmark cities and then within all those additional comparable cities. The population numbers, um, Lehigh was the highest at uh fifty-two, uh down to Springville, which was at they were at twenty-three, I believe, or twenty-six. So what you can see uh here is that uh there's a couple of different cities where revenue dips in relation to kind of the trend of population, Riverton, Pleasant Grove, um, and Caseville. And there's a couple where it, where it jumps up and uh American Fork is one of those. When you add these additional cities to it, we did those um just for comparative purposes. Uh, you asked us to look at that. We did cities that basically ranged other than Orem, which was nearby, and somebody made the comment, well, we look at them for utility rates, so why don't we look at them for other things as well? So that's why that information is there. The others are within the um population ranges of ten thousand above or below us. Um, with the two exceptions of Eagle Mountain and Saratoga Springs, which are just a couple thousand outside of that ten thousand uh range on the low end. But as their neighboring cities, we uh we included them as well.
Well, the ones in the gray are currently not in the study. These, this was for the purposes of showing you on this graph, but we do not, we're not benchmarking their salaries. So we just, we wanted to illustrate that. That was something that was asked as, you know, uh, because the the comparison cities and the the issue becomes is we're not gonna find ten cities that exactly are like Pleasant Grove, that have the exact population, the exact revenue, the exact services provided. So uh generally speaking, what you do is you try to find those that are alike and then you use those as your benchmarks. So it's not always gonna be apples-to-apples. And the more data you have, then hopefully the more valid your numbers are. And so we thought when we initially put this together, to have eleven benchmark cities. And so we thought when we initially put this together, to have eleven benchmark cities, that's pretty good. Now, it's good, now, not every city has a fire chief. Some cities have a fire chief but a volunteer department. You know, so again, when we start talking the apples to apples, it just gets a little difficult. So we're, we're trying to do something that has some statistical significance that we can hang our hat on with the understanding that it's just not gonna be perfect, whatever we do. So that was one of the, we wanted to make sure the council understood the methodology. And David's gonna go a little bit more into how we get the information from individual cities. But when it comes to the picking up our benchmark cities, if there's a feeling that we wanna do that a different way or we wanna add cities or take cities out, if council wants to give us direction, that's fine. This is the methodology we came up with when we put this together a year ago or a year and a half ago, whenever we... Because we started this with all of the employees, not the appointed staff, this is just the... We just got around to updating the appointed staff's salary ranges. We did a lot of other ones on this here throughout the city.
And I will say that the, you know, the number of different data points that we're able to get through the database in the report really is just the starting point. We definitely look at it from that point and try to use some common sense and just some common judgment there to be able to look at it and say, this is the starting point and these are what the numbers generate. But are there other circumstances we need to take into account and things like that? So it isn't all formulaic, it isn't just run reports and spit out numbers, that there is a level of analysis that goes into it beyond that.
Yeah, and so part of the common sense approach, and Lehigh's a good example. A city that has probably doubled the revenues and their population is seventeen thousand more than us. So why do we have them as a comparison city? Well, one reason would be they are a competitor for employees as far as the market. And we could say the same thing about Orem, but we don't compare to Orem because you look at statistically where they're at on that chart, that's way off. But if the city of Lehigh being in the benchmark was causing some heartburn, then, you know, that's a city we could eliminate if that's what the council wants to do. But that was our reasoning for having Lehigh in there as far as part of the benchmark.
Yeah, it would be easy to change some of those or add some of these other cities if you'd like in order to start that process over a little bit. The rest of the, of the information in the packet that you have there, these are just a PDF version of the Excel spreadsheets that we worked it from. But then there's a, there's a tab for each city, or sorry, each position that shows all of the different data from all the different cities for each position. And so you can look through that and see if there's anything there, position by position, if you'd like to look at as well. The second page is one that I'd like to look at just briefly. We totaled up the, we wanted to, we made a little matrix of all of the different cities and all of the different positions and all of the different essentially data points that they provided for us. So you can see that we've got eleven different benchmark cities, but not every single one of them had the position. So, you know, some of these, for example, the city administrator, there's, there's ten benchmark city reports there that we have or cities that responded, others we have eleven, and that, and that just varies position by position based on the cities that provided it. So there's quite a lot of information in there for you, for you to look at, and if you have questions leading up to next week, I'm available and Scott's definitely available.
Well, I have a question or a thought. So can we go back to the other screen? So let's go back to 2007, for instance. And let's pick one position, say, would it be valuable to know where that person was in the minimum to maximum at 2009?
You mean the 2009? So are you talking about the actual salary?
Uh-huh, the actual person and the actual salary. And also when it becomes in the proposed range, where we, where people are.
So you want the actual salaries listed on there?
So, okay, so say our city administrator was, the minimum was ninety-one to sixty-one and the max was one thirty-two, one seventy-four. Where was the city administrator in that?
I don't know.
At that time?
I can tell you. Oh, sorry.
Well, but my question is, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that's how, how that's relevant to the ranges. Because we're talking ranges, we're not talking about actual salaries.
Right, but for some reason, in this discussion amongst a lot of people, it is the question. It is, it's the range plus it is what they are making. So, so I guess my point is, say, say you. Your, your minimum, between your minimum and your maximum and the mid, where are you?
Yeah, I'm right at about the mid.
Okay, so that, I think that's a point that we need to let people know. We're not, you're not out, but you're not making one fifty-seven.
Well, so we, I think we discussed that a couple weeks ago. Again, we didn't have the numbers, we, if, we wanna talk actuals, in some ways that's a different discussion, but if the council wants to talk actuals, we can talk actuals. But what, what we're looking to improve is ranges.
I, I understand that, but does the community understand that? And it's the community right now that we're answering to.
Okay, so if the community's asking the question where all these people fit in the range, then we can, we can list the actuals next to them if that was the council.
I'm just throwing it out there, if the rest of the council don't wanna go, doesn't wanna go there, that's fine. But I think if we do it for proposed, we need to do it where it was in the previous too.
Okay. I'm okay with that, I mean, it's just gonna answer a lot of questions.
I mean, they're gonna find it on the state website of who knows who.
It's not like information.
It's not like information, so it's not like we're hiding anything. To be more transparent, let's put where our people are at the time.
Okay.
As all, as one of the things, and I also want it for 2009.
Okay.
I don't know that I really care, but I think Scott's point may be that if we start putting in actuals, there is a greater likelihood of reviews about what's being done, this particular action, right?
I agree, but major conversation with the city at the moment is where people are.
So I'm thinking of this as a recruiting tool and you're thinking this is a...
Only because it's become that.
Oh, I am not aware of what...
From the community. Because we're getting, the community is putting things on Facebook that they're finding on websites that is stating what people's salaries are.
Okay.
So why don't we give them the full truth, the transparent truth about what everybody's salaries are, where they find, where they are in that range. But in so doing, I want the 2009 one too.
Okay, well, I...
Because it's a nice comparison, because now we're seeing, okay, that's where we were in 2009. Now, and then the whole three percent brings us to this, what, it brings us to this amount.
Sure.
So somebody, so other people, so we're manufacturing, not manufacturing, but we're creating the facts. We're not allowing others to create the facts because we're putting it out there. We're, we're, we're creating a full transparent situation. I understand that it's just for the ranges, but it's become lots more than that.
Okay, that's, I guess I'm not privy to all this other discussion going on.
Right, but that's...
If there's a, if there's another discussion going on about that, then we can show that.
So I would like to see it, just because I feel like we're being as transparent as we can. I want you, I wanna be able to say, yep, Scott makes this. It's this, it's only mid-range.
Yeah.
Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, I...
But our city administrator back in 2009 was making this. We need it all on there, that's my opinion.
Sure.
What is that number, Molly?
You really wanna know?
I'm curious.
Yeah, in 2004, it was eighty-one thousand four hundred. So if he ended at one thirty-two, the city administrator in 2009, it's a sixty-two percent increase.
Well, that's, that's a range, I don't, I don't know what the city administrator...
Well, and we can't open up for a public hearing because it's just a discussion item. Um, no, it's okay. Ben asked me that. Yeah, he did, he asked you. So will council, how do you feel about adding a couple additional columns for current salaries? Ben, are you okay?
I'm comfortable with that, yeah, I know.
Current salary columns?
I know we're not addressing that now, but because it's become such a kind of item. Other people are creating the information, so let's give it to them.
I mean, I will say, Scott, I have someone that said, thought you were making fifty thousand more than you really are.
Sure.
So I'd like to be able to tell them the actual amount.
And I think that's great, and that's just it, I'm not privy to these discussions, all I know is what we're talking about.
You're just going off progression with yourself.
So if there's a discussion going on about that...
I'm in a convalescent center for a week, so I'm not on Facebook. I'm so happy.
The, the information is, I mean, we wanna be transparent, we wanna be able to explain why we pay people what we pay. I think we'll find that almost each employee, if they're above the mid-range, it's not by much, or they are below.
That'd be great, so we can have that column. Okay, and then if Ben wants to make, go to dinner after or whatnot.
Yeah, sure.
I know, and I just appreciate your patience and stuff because, you know, it's not everyone who has their salaries posted for everyone to see and that's personal information, but at the same time, it's public.
Exactly.
And so, and so I appreciate your patience in allowing us to be transparent and post those.
Yes, so you can tell it makes us slightly uncomfortable, but we all understand that our, our salaries are public records. And so to put them up there and have the discussion is fine. You just, it will make us squirm a little bit as we have that. But we as a city need to be able to explain why and justify why and say, here's, here's our methodology in doing this, which we have no problem and let's have that discussion.
And, and I appreciate that because like I said, we're responding to, to false information or inaccurate information going out on social media. And like I said, the person who asked me, I mean, they were way off in their range. And so I wanna be able to respond then with accurate information, like Cindy's saying, let's get a first hand here from the city. And then, like, it's, and I just appreciate, you know, your patience.
Then we have it at our, we have it at our disposal to get the information to the people that need it under the...
Yes. And you have it anyway, I mean...
Well, we do, but I want you to find it all.
Yeah, and... That information is available to any citizen at any time. They don't have to wait for us to show it on the graph in the meeting. If they ever wanna know.
Call Molly.
Anything that's making its open record, they file a grandma request, we'll get them whenever.
Sure, but let's just get it out there for them, they don't have to do all that. Kathy doesn't have to do ten grand.
Philosophically though, I'm not sure. I mean, I guess I'm not familiar with this conversation that's going on about salaries either, but if it's, if it's not in the context of this discussion, maybe there's a different context that we ought to be answering those.
Well...
Yeah, like, it's just a separate document that we create for people that have had curiosities about staff salaries, here's that. But does it muddy the waters in terms of what we're doing in terms of ranges here?
You could create it as, as a separate graph, you know, not...
Or just a separate discussion piece of it.
I mean, I don't mind just throwing up another column, the, the issue becomes is, what's the, are we gonna go from ranges to our compensation philosophy as a city? Are we gonna now have a public hearing on something that is separate from what? Because we're, this does handle compensation philosophy as far as determining our ranges, but then paying within the range, we have issues that we have to work through as a city with all city staff, not just appointed officials, to try to figure out the best way to, because our goal is, when we do these, is to retain quality employees. And so that's why we base it on market, that's why we are saying, what are our neighbors paying? Because when the employee approaches us and says, you know, for the same size, we have a city that's the same size and they're paying, they can pay me extra ten thousand dollars. So we're looking at saying, here's an employee that we've invested ten years in, but we don't wanna keep her at the city because they're one of our best, but the neighboring city can pay them ten thousand dollars more and it's the same size city and we're up in the same budget. We have to look at ourselves and say, now, is this gonna cause problems? I mean, police departments, fire departments are a good example, a lot of training is into these people to get them up to speed, to make them effective, and then if there's a neighboring community that's gonna pay them more. Now, if they decide, I'm gonna go to West Valley or Sandy City, and these are bigger cities that pay more, that's, that's just how it's gonna be. But we're trying to avoid cities that are roughly the same size and what we would consider a lateral move. Somebody moving for more pay, just because we're not keeping up with what the market requires. So that's the compensation philosophy, thin enough.
Yeah, whether it's a separate graph, a column, as long as the information is transparent and up there, I think that's...
So what is the question, what, what is the big question out there?
Well, there's numbers thrown out, but what the staff is making, everyone's salaries. So assuming this holds, they got a twenty-eight percent increase, Scott's making fifty thousand more than he is, we're questioning salaries. So let's just put it up on the screen and make it transparent, so it's coming from the city instead of people.
And I think some of that's coming from the website where I think it includes you. So, and that's, and that's fine, again, that's probably the easiest way to do this, to keep it to where the conversation will somewhat make sense, is probably just add another column. The 2009, I don't...
Well, Ben, just, then you don't have to do the percentage of, the percent change, just add it in that column.
I, my only concern about 2009 is I don't...
Yeah, I don't, I don't...
I don't know what the philosophy was at the time, I don't know if certain employees were above market, below market, you know. And what I don't want is to put up a bunch of numbers from 2009 that's gonna cause issue with the numbers today because we don't know the context of what those numbers were.
And some of those people don't work here.
So should we just do current?
My preference is we just do current, but I know Cindy feels differently about that.
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to bring everything forward.
Well, I think it's the context where, where were we at in 2009 and what was the ranges, right?
So the ranges we show, now, the, and again, I think there's a conversation going on that I'm not super knowledgeable about. But if, if there's people in the public that are saying, we're paying people too much nowadays compared to where we were six years ago, then that information could be valuable. Maybe, I don't know, I mean...
But then we can say, why six years, why not ten years?
We have a different administrator, different finance director, different police chief, different fire chief, different public works director. We have different people in those positions and, and so things have changed as far as...
Dion is the only one.
Oh, I didn't ask you that.
Yeah, there's a lot of loyal, good people.
So how, how come the city engineer that's not applicable for the previous range? We just have one.
He wasn't a director at that.
And this is, and this is salary only?
It's just in with the rest of the four years.
Yeah, he wasn't, he wasn't a department head at the time.
Okay.
That changed to 2009.
And this is salary only, not benefits?
Yes, this is based salary.
And David, do you know, is that what the other cities, do they just do base salary, they don't include benefits? Because everyone's, I guess, is so different, or why is it...
Well, in the database, you can pull different numbers, but we, to make it as close to apples to apples as we could, it's based salary, yeah.
Well, that may be the document, based on what I'm hearing about this conversation with the community, maybe that's what we need to explain to people is there is a difference between salary and salary with benefits, those are different numbers, they're not like apples to apples.
Just put an asterisk on it and say salary only.
Yeah, yeah, that.
Well, so, yeah, if we're gonna put the actuals, we'll just say base salary.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll just title the column base salary.
So one of the things that was requested was a little bit more of the detail. So in your packet, you can pull up each individual position and you can see the comparison numbers with all the cities that go into the details. So you'll, you know, this isn't just data sitting around and making up numbers. This is an actual database that we pay money to belong to, to all this information.
Flashback from my stats class.
No, this is, this is a lot of...
Standard deviation, David.
And I see the date on it is March twenty-fourth, and so obviously, if not, I wouldn't have this in my packet at all. Thank you, now this is great. Do you have more information, David, that you wanna share?
I'm good if you're good.
Anyone else from the council that we can, that you can answer for next week?
It's just a compliment, I think it's tremendous, this is great, you know, for the effort to be responsive to requests.
I do enjoy this actually a whole lot.
We know who likes spreadsheets when we're talking about it.
We know who likes it.
There's eyes, legs, and faces, yeah.
And I'm like, ooh, thank you. Okay, and then the fourth door store, we'll get that back on the Jennifer's week. Okay, and then also the items from the public hearing, B and C, the Pleasant Grove City Code about the, oh, we don't remember that, yeah, we did, okay. All right.
I have one more item that will be on next week's agenda that it's gonna be a development agreement with Norton General for a building on Main Street. And the draft just came back from, to me today from them. It's been on the agenda, we talked about it in directors meeting, but basically, the development agreement addresses some parking and access issues that they have. and access issues that they have, we're developing that piece of property, it's the blank space on Main Street. And, what, south of the old city hall. And they wanna do a mixed-use type of thing where they have some residential and some commercial. They're underpart for the res- for the commercial, and so, in exchange for some increased green space and landscaping and pedestrian access to their property. Um, we negotiated to grant them a flexible parking easement for seven stalls on our side of the area, and that, and those, the actual easement has not been defined yet, so this is just the initial state of the development agreement. Basically, it just says, do what we're gonna agree to do, but they need it in order to afford what they're funding.
Okay, so, okay, so that will be on the next week, now, will they be here presenting, or is this just, is it you presenting?
Um, I assume they'll be here, I can make sure, I can make sure.
Anything else for next week?
I don't know, well, we could find some more stuff if you want.
Okay, um, near with the business, Libby, anything, you got your mud hole representative, are you fully staffed now? Awesome, all right.
You got a, you got a good one.
We were just waiting for nails. Yeah.
I think as long as I play this on.
Nice haircut.
Yeah, I learned what a number three is.
Like it's.
Engineers know that.
Just ahead, Ken, anything from you?
You might have David's.
Oh, sorry. Let's see, we've got the, you probably noticed, we've got the Thai House, we see.
Yes, it's been a long.
So, that's been long awaited. We've got the development agreement, what's the others?
Do you wanna talk a bit about the city picnic?
Oh, yeah, so this year, uh, we're doing something, we're gonna have a oil and oil style picnic party.
Oh.
And so that will be held in the patio area of the little carrot.
Oh, okay. On Monday, August fourteenth, uh, ten.
August the tenth, we need, we do need RSVPs, so.
Okay.
Uh, all city officials and employees and immediate.
All right, thanks for organizing that, Catherine, thank you. David?
I just reminded, it's probably not on Thursday.
That's it, we'll be singing. Who?
Lynn and his brothers will be singing that night.
Oh, cool. Okay.
It's superheroes, right?
And there's some really cool things that are happening with that, some of the vendors have made special superheroes products,
and they reserve them just for that night, and anyway, there's a lot of really neat things, uh, for kids, for families, for adults, for everybody, so come and spend some time at the promenade, you know, there's a lot of them, and uh each week has different fun and different themes, so.
Hey, cool, thanks, Dion?
How's the, just a, just a question, how's the hiring for the position? A couple of weeks ago, you said you were gonna do another series of interviews, I think.
And I meant to update the council, we interviewed two employees, or two people a couple of weeks ago, um, and in this, well, they're still out there, but we have four others we're interviewing tomorrow morning. Um, and so we're gonna work through that and then uh make a decision, we're finding that uniqueness of the position, where part of it's working with the chamber in the economic development role, and the other part's more of a PR, social media thing. To find somebody who has talents in both areas and uh accept a part-time wage is, might be a challenge for us, we'll know better tomorrow. Um, it's possible we might need to actually split the hours, I don't think the budget would change, but we might need to split it and maybe have two different positions. We'll know better tomorrow.
Dion?
I'm distracted, Shannon Field, search someone, Dave, they're about done with planning, it's really good.
Oh, awesome. Thank you, thanks, Marty?
Um, just a couple of things, um, we were requested to put a little bit of information on the city website, which we have done, underneath the public works tab, there is a uh link, it's called construction project updates, that you can refer people to, and that it gives a couple of the larger projects. There were some questions as to the amount of detail that we wanna do on this, we we do a lot of projects, and we've got developers that are doing a lot of projects, but those projects are generally like one week at the most, maybe a day, and so those were difficult things that, by the time we get them up, they're probably done, so we're focusing more on the larger projects, we have the first west project, there's the Quest Art Gas Line project, um, coming down thirties, there's some project information on there with those projects, with some timelines, when they're gonna be constructing, we'll be updating those weekly, um, Greg Calvert down there will be doing that.
Okay.
And coordinating that, so hopefully, we can try to keep some more up-to-date information on that.
So basically, that it's timelines of completion dates, and then like a one or two liner of what is actually going on in the project and the area that will be affected or closed, is that kinda what it is?
That's the goal, is to kinda give an update of, you know, what what is the current progress, and then what is the overall project description? And kind of, and start and end dates of the projects.
What's going on with loader?
Lower Avenue.
If I forget one more time, and I'm going up that road, and just go all the way around, I'm gonna.
That's a subdivision to the north side.
Well, because I thought, well, the week is supposed to be closed, it didn't, and then it was the next week, and I thought it was only gonna be closed like three or four days, and now we're going on.
There was gonna be at least a week, and they found that what they thought was in the ground wasn't exactly the way fairly typical on open things up, so.
So, it was that that first week, just due to the rain or something?
It wasn't here last week, so I don't know what happened. I don't know, it was all rain-related, I understand that there were some things that they encountered that we then had to do some changes.
So like, is the loader project on there, on the website?
No, so again, these development projects, like for example, today, we had to drive that along winter north for three or four hours, or five hours. Uh, by the time we got that information on the website, it's done, and so, same concept, even if it's one week long, by the time we get that information, yeah, we can give it to our web, I I don't, I can't remember, St. Tram. And he might post it that night or the next day, kind of depending on his schedule, but a lot of times, these projects are kind of quick in and out of the roads, and then they're just working on their development project, so, um, sometimes they say, well, it's gonna take us two days, and yeah, sometimes it takes longer, so when do we put those on, and help put those on, I guess that's, that's kind of the concern, I guess, with the shorter projects, do we try to manage that, give a full description of all development work being done in the city, and if they're gonna be in a road, we identify that. That would take a lot of effort and coordination and time, and we don't have weekly construction meetings with these developers and contractors, that's all done through engineering or engineering inspectors.
So do we have like the, what's going on, I mean, just like here by the light and all these, the gas, like, there's a lot, there's a bunch of gas, and that's on there?
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the thing that you may not see is, so we've asked them to provide us weekly updates, Quest Art Gas, because we don't see our contract, all their projects, we do have a weekly coordination meeting that's helping us to kind of decipher the information they're giving us. Uh, we're trying to get that information on there, and they're sending us an update of this is where we plan on be, being working here in the next week or two from this, only to this point, just to kind of give some general information.
Okay, so, so loader, we're looking at, we don't know the timeline now?
I don't know, they they sent me a request this morning for approvals and changes because of conflicts that are running into the ground, into the underground.
Okay, all right, no, we're getting there, I mean, we're, this is a start, this is good, so, we'll just refer people to the site, just kinda see how it goes and the feedback, and see if they're wanting projects to be in a little bit short time period. A week is kind of a long time, I think, for, you know, on those, but maybe let's just see how the feedback goes, we'll go from there, so, yeah, thanks for doing that, anything else?
Uh, I think that was it.
Okay, all right, thanks, Chief Thomas?
I'm pretty sure I mentioned this before, but I'll just remind you that the crews are out turning hydrants, and so if you get questions, we just, this is just part of the uh, um, the rotation that we do. We check a third of the hydrants every year, and so if people are wondering kind of what's going on, we check, um, check the the flow, we check pressures, make sure everything's functioning right, and uh, then if we have any issues at all, then we communicate with uh, with public works.
You could turn my into a street walk party, right?
Yeah.
I have, I have great memories of that, probably have, by the way, did fireworks just start a fire?
It just started.
I know.
I wondered that too, Diane.
Sorry. How many hydrants do we have in the city, do you know?
I mean, what?
How many hydrants do we have in the city, that they have to check?
My DC hundred.
And they check a third a year?
We do a third of them every year.
Okay, all right, awesome, thank you, Chief Smith?
I don't have any, you know, oh, I, one thing, I just wanna thank, and I'll forget, I'll miss people because I don't know who was there. The only person I do know, um, for sure was Molly, because I know she had it a lot of it, but just thank everybody who helped um, do the work on the police department, it looks really good, so thank you to everyone who participated.
You have almost everybody who's here, Jennifer, Lisa, um, Ben, Eric, Sid.
Thank you.
We had a lot, and thank Dion.
And I like the monkey, the monkey's pretty cool.
Nobody knows about the monkeys.
There's nothing about monkeys.
That, that was kind of on the download.
There is no monkey.
Not now.
That was an inside joke.
Okay, well, we'll see, but it'll. Jerry, wait, the grant, goal on the grant, this is awesome.
Yes, but I also wanted to mention, summer reading is ending next week, so we are just about done. And we've had really good attendance, and I'm a little concerned about losing seven parking stalls, because you might have noticed you can't find a place to park. Which, and I anticipate that being the worst problem as the year's progressed. Um, I, before I even got to the library, um, one of the staff applied for a grant um, for RFID, and I'll explain what that is, and she got rejected, and then I applied three more times for the same thing, and this last time, the fourth time, we got it. So that shows persistence, thanks all. And this is a forty-nine thousand dollar grant. And. No match.
No match, wow.
Um, and what this includes is, well, so RFID, they use it in grocery stores and other places too, but it's a, you put a sticker that's got a little antenna inside it, inside every book and item in the library, um, and.
Can I call us, answer?
Only if you hold it up your head for eight hours, that'd be awesome.
Um, and then, you take the barcode scanner and you program it, I mean, it takes a second, it takes a, basically scanning the barcode. Um, and, once that's in there, then when you take your books up to check out, you can have a stack of books, you just set them down, it automatically reads through all of the stack and checks them all out at once, and turns off the security at the same time. Um, and then, so there will be security, and that was a big part of the grant, was security gates for upstairs and downstairs. Um, those were eighteen thousand or something like that, they were very expensive, um, but those will automatically, um, with that tag, it automatically signal if something has not been checked out, um, and then, and it turned off. Uh, and it also tracks how many people come in and out of the library.
Oh, really?
Um, automatically with that too, uh, and then we'll also get two more self-checkout machines um, that will work using this technology that, um, in the long term, are going downstairs in the child, what will be the children's area.
Cool.
Um, and staff stations, you know, check-in is much easier, because same thing, you can just set it down, it automatically checks it in. Um, you can do inventory, just wave this, they call it an inventory wand, but you can just wave it across the bookshelves, and it automatically tells you what's there, so that you don't have to take, and what has been done in this library in the past is they've loaded every single book onto carts, brought them up to the front, scanned every single book with the barcode scanner, put it back, um, to know what we really have, that's what it totally elim- will totally eliminate making to do that. So, it's really awesome technology. The staff especially will love it, but patrons will too, patrons love it, it's super easy too.
Yes, twice I've gone and the books are not there.
It's really an intuitive technology, when you check out this piece of cake every, even older people that I've used this, we we have that where I worked before, even older people who don't want to use self-checkout, you know, we would just walk over with them and and do it for them, it's a, no problem, well, let's do it. We'll show you how to do it.
The older, the older prior chief.
Um, but you just walk, we just walk over, do it for them, they watch how simple it was and never ask for help again, and that really is basic.
That's awesome, so running much more, it'll help ladder run much more efficiently and it's cost savings, and that's awesome, so just keep applying to those friends, you're, you're on a roll, so, yeah, keep going, thank you.
A quick question, if I may?
Yes.
About that, are there ongoing licensing fees, or is it?
There are maintenance costs that will have to absorb in our budget.
Do you know what those are, I can't?
It just depends how much company we go with, we haven't decided, there there are multiple companies, it's, I'm, I'm gonna say it's eleven hundred dollars a year or something like that.
Way to go, Mary, appreciate that, and Scott?
So, uh, a couple hours before this meeting, I sent the council an email with a link to the structural engineering studies done by bone and columns. Um, we, uh, that's for your, uh, you, this is in a draft form right now, but it's gonna be pretty close to what the final form is, as you read through it, you're probably gonna have questions, because it gets technical fairly quickly. I added Stephen Collins' email address and phone number, um, he's, uh, now, you can talk to some of the staff there, we'll tell you what we know from it, but if you really wanna get into the technical side piece of the phone call that you wanna make, um, they would like to come and present it to the council, um, and we, uh, penciled in next Wednesday at six o'clock. Is that, is there anybody that has a time conflict with that?
What, is that July?
So it's July twenty-ninth?
Will they do it any earlier or not?
We could. Last time they came, they came at like four o'clock, and then.
That's me, I was like, hey, compared on Tuesday, and then Wednesday late, so we could even do, I don't know, whatever else, I think, we could do it earlier during the workday, so we're up here.
That's, that's fine with us.
A little harder for me, but uh, it's not gonna be a long meeting, right, I mean, I anticipate an hour and.
Couple hours, and, yeah, there's, there's a lot of information to go over, and I think we're gonna get a lot of questions. I mean, the staff, as we were going through it, we had a lot of questions, I spent probably forty-five minutes on the phone with him as he was explaining things.
But can we do like a three or four o'clock?
Yeah, I mean, for staff, that's great, we're all over that, with you guys, that's. Have to leave your jobs to come, if you wanted, if you wanna make some direction.
Well, later's better for me, but if we shop for, after the workday, five thirty-six, I don't mind missing dinner, but getting here.
Is four o'clock too early then?
Four o'clock would be trickier, um.
Why'd you make that work? I'd say to keep the staff here on Tuesday, and then Wednesday, and if we're, if we can avoid that, that would be. Well.
Yeah, we, well, certainly staff does, not, not, not everybody.
The chiefs and Scott, probably Tina, I mean.
But we're, I mean, we're okay to do that, but we wanted to.
Arden, is five okay?
And I, and I'll have to, I'll text the mayor and see what his schedule is, but if, if, if five of you want to three on the.
Or is there another day that we could make earlier?
Friday, easier, I don't mind, I, I don't wanna wait too long.
It's the twenty-four.
The following Friday.
I can't wait.
I, I'm, I will be, I will be.
Fridays, they're all off at noon.
Oh, yeah.
So why don't we just compromise at four thirty?
Okay.
Four thirty?
Let, let's.
I can make it work.
Okay, so let's say four thirty next Wednesday, and I'll, I'll, see if that works out for the mayor, if not, I'll let you know. If you don't hear from me, just assume that's where we're at, we'll send a reminder. We'll send a reminder email to you.
Okay, and then, since that is in draft form, that's not, that probably shouldn't go public at this point.
I, I wouldn't, uh, no, I, I think, uh, they need to come present to you first.
Before we, because there's gonna be a lot of questions, that if we just send this out, we don't know whether somebody.
Direction before that report's finalized, and so I wouldn't hesitate to send that out, um, for uh, uh, public scrutiny just yet. It will have plenty of time for public scrutiny, but let's, let's make sure we're all on the same page before.
Well, it shouldn't be dispersed until it's not in draft form. Not until you've had the opportunity to have it presented to you, after that, then. Because you may ask them for additional information before you make the final, so.
So.
Okay. Tina, do you have anything?
No, I had lots of fun last week, and Scott.
Yes.
That was.
And I loved her being there. Did you do that one often?
We were nicer to her than we already is.
Okay, well, no wonder she likes. I think she had her issues that she had to work through, so.
Okay, and then you already touched on you, um, Kathy?
To be, are you voting starts, um, at city hall?
Okay.
She's there, actually coming in tomorrow instead of us, so.
Beautiful? Okay. I'll get that out. Eric? Diana?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just gonna, where are we on the city directory?
Forty day and close.
Oh, gosh. Let's, how about a date, we have a date.
I'm in, I'm in with.
Because I think we took the pictures in January, and then we're like.
Older. We might have done the urgent January, we had employees, we were tracking down up till about three, two.
So where are we at with that?
So I met with Trent yesterday, and we are, we are just organizing the final, um, the final kind of order of the employees. He's met with many of the department heads to get their, how they look, their departments to look, and order of employees, things like that. And so, um, he said by the end of this week, he'd like to have kind of a final draft that we'd be able to look through, and make final changes again. So we're hoping by the end of, by the end of the month, we'll be able to.
Now, did we give pictures like planning commission board of adjustment, things like that? Can we include just their contact information in the city directory, maybe not a picture, but at least their contact information?
Well, this is not an external directory, this is a, I mean.
That's fine.
Yeah.
But I still like to.
So we already have a list with all that information, this.
Cause that might not be the reason we're set up.
I don't, she emails it out every year.
Actually mail it out. Is it all in one place, or is it separate from planning commission board of adjustment?
No, it's all in one place. It's the twenty thirteen city directory, she mailed it out at the beginning of the year.
It's the beginning of the year, it comes out every year.
Okay, but then that gets updated with new members and things like that?
Well, it gets updated every year, so if we added somebody.
Also, I mean, we have laws in planning commission, and we had new board of adjustment, and then we had, so I'm trying to make sure that that.
Well, photos of. Yeah, so.
So August first.
We have two different things going on here. We have a photo directory that's gonna be the elected officials and all of the full-time and permanent part-time employees.
Okay.
Then we have, uh, our city directory, which is, has no pictures, just has names, office number, cell number, and we have that for all the employees in the city that have an office phone or a cell phone. And included in that is planning commission board of adjustment, and a few of the committees, I believe.
Arts, things like that.
But we only update that once a year, so if we've made changes in May, that won't be reflected until.
Okay. All right, so August first, we'll get that directory out.
We will get you a draft copy, and then you guys will have an opportunity to look at it, see if you wanna tweak anything.
All right.
Can't do anything about individual photos, but we can, where you, where you move.
So you can't, you can't go leave it. Um, so my dad fell and fractured his femur, and he lives in Saratoga Springs, like, my mom tried to lift him and she tore him muscle about. But, um, very wonderfully, when a nine-one-one was called, um, I had two peasant rope boys um, show up in my paramedics, uh, that work for, part-time for Saratoga Springs, it was very, very nice. But on a side note, um, we have no convalescent to facility in peasant rope, just so you know. It's a big la- it's, it's, it's a big hole, lack of.
Well, we have Alpine Care. Is that a rehab facility?
That's a, like, like convalescent, I think, is the interim, like, something, a hospital to the nursing home.
Is it called transitional re?
Transitional or whatever, so.
It is a rehab. So there's not many in Utah County, and there's waiting lists to get in.
Oh, it's, it's ridiculous.
And that's where they are. So I've been in, I have been in a convalescent center for, uh, now we can.
Ben?
I've got a couple of questions, I'll catch some staff afterwards, but nothing with you to speak on.
All right, make a motion to adjourn.
Whether we are in council?
Um, twenty-fourth offices are closed, correct?
Yes, for the holiday.
For the holiday?
I agree.
That it?
Yeah.
Point itself to the debate, right?
Twenty-seventh debate at Betera at, since it's, during the, when it sits, seven o'clock for debate, we'll see you there. Ben, anything else? All right.